I'm good with that. Jan, John, is that okay?
When Clyde and Dave present, they've got a meal, we can't present.
Okay. Okay. We'll wait till Clyde slips back in here and we'll get started. John, can John hear us? Let's go ahead and get started. Good morning, everyone. Thank you.
It's the new.
Tell John not to... Asking if that backdrop was leaning against some palm tree. We can close that a little bit, Clyde, so you can see, but we can't shut it, okay? Thanks, everyone. Jan and John, thanks for tuning in from Hawaii and from South Salt Lake. Board, thanks for coming. Superintendent C., Pam, thanks for everything you do. Matt. And everybody else that is supporting us. I appreciate you coming this morning. Remind everyone that this is a open meeting. So please ensure that I behave well. And don't get out of hand. Appreciate everybody's time. Superintendent and I spent eight or 10 hours on Saturday in meetings with representatives from other school districts Saturday. And it just drove home the fact of what a great board we have, how well we work together, the respect we have for each other, kindness and the conducive-ness that we use. And it just, that was a great thing. So I appreciate everyone and helping us out with that. First thing, you know, let me mention something else that happened Saturday at that meeting. There was, there was a lot of discussion about, it was brought up several times, a discussion about public education is the battleground of the 21st century now. It's kind of become the hotspot, you know? And we see that a lot on the news. We've seen it a little bit in our own meetings, but just appreciate everybody's willingness to, to fight that battle with us. Hopefully, you've got such a good board and hopefully everything just keeps things under control. Like, I shared with superintendent Saturday morning on our way to Spanish Fork. I was reading an article out of the log and paper. And in summary form, it said, "There's a group of residents from Hooper who are banding together to oppose the new school." Blah, 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 blah. They're going to meet, you know, etc. And it was dated 1896. So this stuff's been going on for a long time, you know? And, and things will happen. But I feel pretty good where we're at. We've run an agenda that superintendent and some others are going to take care of. One thing that we wanted to discuss just a little bit before we got started was typically on our, at our board meeting, our study session, soup and salad, what we've called it, we've typically started that at five o'clock. And we've kind of eaten. And then we have rolled into our, our study session at about a quarter after or 20 after five, spent until six o'clock in our study session. And because of schedules and, and different things, we've moved from here out to the boardroom. It's been brought up a couple of times that we, to make that a little bit more comfortable. Maybe what we'll do is, you know, we have people from the district that have already been in our office for 12 hours by the time soup and salad starts. We'll give everybody a meal. We'll start that if you want to come in at a quarter to five. And we'll run that to about a quarter after five. And then, and we'll have that here in superintendent's office and in Clyde's office. And then we will move out to the boardroom and start our official study session. Yeah, so this in here will just be very social. Talk about your grandkids, the snow, how cold it is, the deer that are eating your trees, all that kind of stuff. And then we'll start our official study session at 20 after five in the boardroom. That will give us the same amount of time that we've always given boards a study session, but it'll also allow those that would like to come have a meal, some time to do that. And.
Great idea.
And that'll be... I, I know sometimes, Stuart, I hate to sit in front of you. You know, it's just kind of uncomfortable.
That's not the thing for me.
So, you know, I think that'll ease things up a little bit, give us a little bit more leniency on, on our, our, being able to eat and talk and things a little bit. Okay?
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
If I could just chime in on this. I think the suggestion would be made that definitely we know that during that meal, it's not even called soup and salad. I would suggest it not be called soup and salad.
Correct.
It's been offered for a meal if you want to come in and get something to eat. Because like you said, I'm coming from Sandy.
Sure.
You could be kept for three more. It's going to be a long day. It's been a long day, it could be a long night. We also have to speak with staff, just around board meetings. And so a meal is being offered, all right?
Yes.
And then we don't have to, and then we can go to the workshop. But if you have to speak with the director, you don't do it during that meal session. Or you could go and visit somebody down in kindergarten one-on-one. But nothing needs, nothing should and should and will be discussed during that meal.
Yeah.
Until we get workshop, which is listed on the workshop agenda.
Correct. The meal is strictly so that any business needs to take place in the, in the study session in the boardroom.
Yes. They don't have to tear, they don't have to tear all the tables down where assistant superintendent, WEA were eating, all that stuff. It's clean, we don't have... I just think it's a little more comfortable that those who want to eat can eat. And then we start our meeting, start up.
Yeah. It'll be more efficient use of time also. So.
Thank you.
Anything else? You good? Okay. I think that we're ready. Please be patient with me. Deb and I spent our Valentine's evening and night at the hospital last night, this morning with, with my older sister. And so my eyes are puffy. That two hours of beauty sleep I got last night didn't do much for this mug, you know? So, so if I fall asleep, Robert, just poke me in the ribs, would you? And was that superintendent's behalf?
I appreciate that, President Whitson. Board, I'm super excited today to talk to you a little bit about where we're headed with Weaver School District and to get your input. And if you wouldn't mind, I'm going to divert a little bit from tradition. And I'm going to use a PowerPoint here. And John and Jan, I'm hoping that when we share this with you, you're going to be able to see it, okay? So do I want to go entire screen first and then pull it up, right? Click right here. I've got a very...
You're full, nothing to do.
Okay, can you two see that?
Yeah. Yeah, we got it.
Awesome, okay, perfect. You let me know at any time when, when you, if you can. But we, we have not had a chance to sit down as a, as a group with you, and I'm speaking about Clyde and Dave and I as a superintendent C., to kind of give you an idea of where, where we'd like to head and why. Kelly, you're brand new to the board. And we thought this would be a great time to just give you that, a blueprint and get your input on some things. We have spent a lot of time between the time we came aboard in August officially to now, really digging in and talking with our folks, employees, students, parents. We've done a lot of, we've put a lot of legwork and time into that. The other thing that we've spent a lot of time doing is digging into our district's data to see how our kids are doing. We've been looking at student performance. And so what we'd like to do today is share some of the things that we have gleaned from those experiences. I'm, I'm going to have some friends, guests, leaders come in at different intervals and share different pieces with you this morning. But I want to talk about what we believe is our blueprint for success moving forward, okay? So the first thing I want to emphasize is, there's a phrase right here, "The bones are good." And you've heard that phrase before. And you've got a little architectural schematic here I used as a metaphor. But I want to make sure that I do my due diligence and give props where props are due. Dr. Stevens is 11 years married to our opinion. He set a blueprint, he just set a foundation for us that we can, we can build on. His focus on the whole child and all of the supports that we've been able to bring in around children created a framework that we feel so good about and so comfortable about building upon. Does that make sense? And so when I say the bones are good, I can assure you all that we're in good shape. We've got a great foundation to build upon. And I think we're philosophically aligned with a lot of the things that have been going on. Every area that was focused upon during his tenure, we grew. We grew, and I'll give you one example, graduation rates. Graduation rates, probably the start of his tenure were around low 80s percentage-wise if you look at our four high schools. And by the time Dr. Stevens left and retired, we were where we are right now, which is around 89 to 90%. We're, we're pushing against 91%. So that was just one area of focus. And I, I, one of the things that I'm so proud having been, having been a part of in my other roles is we had a vision. We knew what he was about. We knew that he wanted to put all the supports he could around the whole child. And we have so many things working for that. And our, our, our job, as Clyde, Dave and I have strategized, we felt our job is to streamline all the great things that are going on and focus a little bit more in areas. So that's what we'd like to talk to you about today, okay? So it's hard to see this. I'm going to leave that up here, but it says, "The house don't fall when the bones are good."
He can hide that.
Yeah, I can hide that right there.
Yeah.
But I believe that we're on solid ground. And there's a country song out there by Barry Morris, if you've heard it. I won't play it for you today, but it's, it's all about the fact that a good, a well-built home, a well-built home has a great foundation, a good structure. And when those things are good, the house is good. It's going to withstand any storm. And that's how I feel about Weaver School District, okay? Really quickly, just to emphasize the whole child. We are going to stay with our focus on the whole child. And you remember during Dr. Stevens' tenure, he talked about these areas a lot, that we want our kids to be healthy, safe, engaged, supported and challenged. And that doesn't matter if they're a struggling student or a high-performing student or some, one of a student in the middle, that these were the tenets of the whole child focus. And we're going to stay intently focused on those areas. And I will share this presentation with you, so. But you can also see here that these tenets are built directly in cohort with Maslow's. You've heard of Maslow's hierarchy of needs. And what we're finding post-pandemic is that these, these have become even more relevant than ever before. We have a lot of kids and families right now that have experienced a lot of trauma in their lives. And we know that there's a lot of focus right now across the country on school safety. Some of our children, you know, feel afraid coming to school because of the impact that some of these school shootings have had on our kids. And we just know that kids are feeling a little bit more disconnected. We, we've noticed this in their behavior and things over the past few months. So we know we have a lot of work to do around the whole child. And we're really going to focus in heavily on these areas around Maslow's hierarchy of needs as well, making sure that their needs are met, making sure that we buoy up those supports so that they can be successful. So the whole child will be our foundation still going forward. And please, if you have questions or comments, I'd love you to interject here. Before I get too far, let me leave it here for just a second. And I'm going to ask for your brevity a little bit and patience with me. Some of you might have seen these signs around our schools. We have these out. And at every door of our district, in every school of our district, we have these. We have one here by the back door. I want to talk a little bit about this because I haven't had a chance to talk to you about this. A slogan is a slogan. And slogans are good, they're great. But sometimes I find that if you get too slogany, you lose focus on what, what you're about. But we had a slogan that kind of naturally developed at the start of this year that I want to tell you about. And it will, it will tie into the foundation a bit. So I'm going to ask you to be patient with me because I'm going to tell you a story, if that's okay? And that will help you to get to know me a little bit better and who I am. We've had individual conversations, but I don't know philosophically if you really yet know how I'm built. And I would like to take a second, if that's okay? This young man is my nephew, Bridger. He is a very dear one to me, and I'm going to get a little emotional. He went to Bonneville High School. The day before you called me into this office to tell me I had been selected as a superintendent, he was killed in a motorcycle accident the day before. And I, to be honest with you, I don't remember any part of our conversation that day other than you congratulating me. And I remember walking out thinking, "What is the meaning in this situation?" Within a 24-hour period, I'd lost probably one of the most dear people in my life. And I just was bestowed this great honor and responsibility. And to be honest, I didn't know quite how to proceed. I had to sit with it for a while. I want to tell you a story about his accident, not to traumatize anybody, but it speaks to this. I always think there's meaning in messy situations. And after we got through the funeral as a family and we were still kind of coming to terms with Clyde without Bridger Man, a nurse, a trauma nurse called my brother, Nat, and his wife, Whitney, Bridger's parents, and said, "Could I, could I meet with you?" And they were a little surprised. And they said, "Sure." "Who are you?" And this lovely woman said, "I, I was with Bridger when he passed away." "I'd love to meet with you." And of course, they were anxious to meet with her. So I went out to dinner with her. She is a trauma nurse at Davis Hospital. She was traveling up 12th Street. Thoughts were rolling in her head. She was going through a very stressful time in her life. This is how she recounts it. She's given me permission to tell her story. She was going through a difficult time in her marriage, raising three small children. She was on her day off, she was late for an appointment. And she could see that there'd been an accident up ahead. She was heading east on 12th Street. My dear nephew works, worked at a motorcycle shop on 12th Street called Tucker Speed. And he was testing a motorcycle that he was working on. And he had come along Washington, headed south, taken a ride on, on 12th Street. Was just moving with the flow of traffic. And right there, Chamber Street, a big heating and air van punched it across 12th Street. And did not see, punched it out. And there was a car across this way coming. And he yielded and let this car turn, which I'm assuming Bridger saw that happening in front of him. But this big heating and air van kind of slowed down in the midsection and then punched it across immediately, knowing he was hanging out in the intersection. And Bridger didn't even have time to put his brakes on. He went right into the back of that heating and air van. Woman traveling up, up the street, traffic stalled. She says to herself, "I'm on my day off. I'm not going to stop. I have too much going today, I'm late for this appointment." She came kind of parallel to the accident. She could see the dear Bridger Man laying on his back in the, in the road, his bike there. And there were a bunch of bystanders standing around him, people on phones. There was a lot of frenetic activity, but nobody was attending to my nephew. She pulled her car off. She jumped out of her car, to her credit, she ran across the street. And she knelt down, he had his helmet on, and she made eye contact with him. And his eyes, she said, fixed right on him. He was having a difficult time breathing. And she said to him, she said, as she held his head, "I, I see you, I've got you. I see you, I've got you." She kept repeating that. He passed away. She saw the light kind of leave his eyes. And she began CPR at that point. And without her intervention, Bridger's heart would not have continued to beat. She kept his heart going until the paramedics got there and took him from there, took him up to a McCady Hospital. He was pronounced dead at McCady Hospital. His brain injuries were just too severe. He had damaged his brain stem. But when she recounted that story to my brother and his wife, you can imagine the relief and the comfort that that provided to them, that somebody was with him when he passed in that kind of sacred moment. I was, heard that story. And we had a leadership retreat. And I felt compelled, inspired, I don't, to share that with our district leaders.
Inspired?
Inspired. Robert was there, he watched me follow my way through that. It's a little easier to tell now, but we have become very good friends as a family with that lovely nurse. My nephew, because of her actions, was able to donate his most vital organs. He was an organ donor. And his heart, that she worked on, kept going, went to a single mother of three. He was able to give away other parts of his, his wonderful, strong body to others and save four or five different lives and keep them going. Because this woman took the time to run towards a situation that was stressful and probably not in her willhouse, she was on her day off. As I told that story, that "I see you, I've got you" phrase, this, one of our leaders, Rod Melnab, you know Rod very well. Rod called me afterwards and we talked a long time. And he said, "Gina, I think you're on to something there. I think there's a reason that happened and you became superintendent at the same time." Don't, don't minimize that, think about that. So we turned it into, turned tragedy into kind of an inspirational theme. And I hope that you can understand what we mean. And I, I picked Dave and Clyde as my assistant superintendents for a reason because they embody this. We want every child, we want every employee in our district to feel that we see them and that we've got them. It doesn't matter what their challenges are, what they're grappling with. This is what tone that we want to set in Weaver School District and build on that foundation. So when you see this, that's where that, that story came from and where that... Wanted to make you aware of that. Bridger talks to me all the time. I can feel him, I think of him with decisions that we made. He was a young man that was a 3.8 student, didn't really have to try hard at school. Everything came naturally to him. But he found his calling about three months before. He was a hands-on guy. He didn't want to go to school. He went up to Weaver State. And I remember him saying to me, he was living with me for a short period of time when he was going to Weaver State. He said, "And gee, I don't want to take volcanoes and mountain range and geography. I don't want to take those classes. I want to do something with my hand." So he went down to Arizona and went to the Harley-Davidson Institute. He was always fanatical about motorcycles. Became a technician and, and was living his dream at the time that he passed away. And I want every student that we have to find their place, the thing that they're passionate about. So I keep his story in mind. And I do believe that his passing, which was February 24th, it's coming up a week, about a week from now, his passing was foundational to my approach in this role as a leader. And I believe it's inspiring, kind of the walk that we're taking. So I wanted to share that with you. Around the same time that this happened, and I apologize about the emotional piece there, but I felt it was important for you to hear kind of where that started. We got a legislative audit back. And I wanted to talk a little bit about this, not too long. But we were, according to Senate Bill 160, audits of school districts are to take place every year. And for whatever reason, Weaver School District was chosen to be the first district auditor by the Office of the Legislative Auditor General.
And they've been auditing agencies, state agencies, for a long, long time. And this was expanded to include school districts.
I want to just give you an overview, a quick overview of it because that process was a difficult process we went through in that they were here for almost a full year.
Yeah.
They had an office here, the auditors were here, they interviewed district leaders, they looked into all things financial for our district. They really kind of, there was no stone unturned. And at the end, we got a report. And I'm just going to pick out some of the, the pieces that we like to focus on. You can see the intent of SB 160. They wanted, its intent is to evaluate whether the district's operations are commensurate with our spending history, evaluate whether Weaver School District is diligent in its stewardship of state resources, and evaluate historic trends in our operational performance effectiveness. So those were the things that they were looking at. And at some, some of the times, it was hard to determine if, what they were trying to figure out. But here's some of the things that we found, okay? And so I'll, I'll go through each one piece, each piece. "Weaver School District Strategic Plan does not focus on district performance. Building can be updated to better target district priorities." That was one of their key findings. "We can bolster our controls and oversight over grant management. We can review and update our strategic plan to target district-in-bribe board priorities a little bit better. And we should evaluate the adequacy of internal controls over grant management." There were some other pieces here. They gave us a shout-out. "Targeted efforts by the district to improve graduation rates demonstrate the benefit of strategic planning." They gave us, I wish they could have worded that a little bit more positively because that's how it was worded. "The efficiency of spending of most Weaver School District operational areas are similar to what is seen in other districts." We do have a little bit of a, an exception with, we have a little bit of higher food costs and we're looking at that right now. "Weaver School District should identify ways to focus priorities, focus its priorities on measurable outcomes, especially those that focus on improving student outcomes. And we should compare our operational performance to other peer districts and maybe bring in a few more best practices aimed at improvement." Well, as Dave and Clyde and I got around this, we realized new superintendent C., good foundation, we need to build a new strategic plan for Weaver School District going forward. I put a quote in here because I believe this. Right as we walked in, as you might know, a few challenges surfaced. And I believe this, this quote to my very soul. "If your path is difficult, your purpose must be greater than you thought." We believe that the path is difficult right now in public education. Excuse me, President Whitson talked about it. It has become the battleground a little bit. And we, every day, make sure that we try to drown out the noise that's around us and we stay laser-focused on what our people need and what our, what our kids need. I talked a little bit about this already. That's Bridger there on the right, about two months before, well, it was in the summer before he passed away. And look at that face right there. We, he was just my, my, one of the lights of my life. I want you to, I talked about the heroic companion, the act of that nurse. But I want to show you a really quick video. If you, just bear with me because I think this speaks to what we're about and where we're headed.
We are doing a positivity challenge here at John Collins High School. We're looking to find a student that inspires a student to work in that.
Come on, try it. And. Try that again.
I want to tell you that you're one of the reasons I come here every day. I love that every day you want to listen to Spanish music and that you want to speak Spanish and that you try to keep the class speaking in Spanish. And I just wanted to take a moment to tell you that and that you're awesome. And you're why I love to come to work every day.
Yeah, because two years ago, you wrote me probably one of the most awesome notes that I've ever gotten from a student. And I guess I'll keep what was in between us, but I feel like I keep that note. And sometimes when I have a bad day, I read it. So I just want to say thanks. I'm trying to try. I just want to say thank you for being kind of a quiet leader, being motivated. And you know, it makes you feel like our Dr. Whitson.
That you are one of... I'm going to escape, just pop out of there for a second. I, I, it looks like I linked it to the, there's various, there's some other videos that are, I'm going to send you the one that I really wanted you to see, but they're all around the same piece. I want, what I want, really want... I want, what I really want to do is I want to make sure you guys understand as a board that we as a superintendency want to make sure that every one single child that walks through our doors, that they have a teacher, one caring adult in that building that sees them, that conveys to them that we've got you. And I will send the video that I really wanted you to see. It's very similar to that one, but has a little bit different meaning.
Can I say something else?
Yes.
I got an email also. My daughter, I was at my son's basketball game last night in Farmington. And my daughter, my eighth grader called me and she was like, Mom, did you get an email? I was like, I don't know, I haven't looked at my email in a little bit. She's like, Mom, I think you got it because I got it. My English teacher text, or emailed, so her English teacher had arrived, emailed both of us to tell her what an outstanding student she was and how kind she is to her. Anyways, it was just funny because my daughter doesn't usually get excited about that kind of stuff, but she was so excited that her teacher had taken the time to say those nice things about her. So it does matter.
That Patterson has taken that to heart. So we challenged our leaders, leaders to embrace this kind of leadership launcher right here. And I just want to take you through it a little bit. This came out in a few of our meetings right off the front at the start of the school year. We've really tried to inspire them. They're tired, they've come out of a pandemic themselves. They are dealing with a lot of the controversy and a lot of the battleground, if you will, these challenges that we talked a little bit about earlier. There's a lot coming at our leaders right now and we have really tried to buoy them up because as the leader goes in the school, so does the staff and the students. So we've tried really hard to set the tone that you are critical, this work is critical, especially right now. It's sacred. We're asking them to trust us and to walk the more difficult path. We've got some things to do to get us where we need to get in our district and to embrace that difficult path. We've really tried to help them understand that every single one of them, we feel has a special set of strengths that we need right now. We need your individual strengths to come to bear right now. We afforded them some grace and we've tried to provide some support and we've encouraged them to do that with our teachers and our students. Students are coming to our schools more than ever acting out. And that acting out is, we believe, a direct result of anxiety and the stressors they're feeling about the world that they're living in right now. And we're coming up with some ideas and we'll share some of those with you to support them. We're trying to help them understand how important it is to sit across from other people. And even if they're angry or frustrated or sad or anxious, listen to them. Engage with them, be empathetic to them. We want them to take compassionate action. And we talked about that leadership really is love. As corny as that can sound sometimes, leadership, you have an obligation when you're a leader to love those that you interact with. We're encouraging them to try some new things and not be afraid to fail because we're living in a different time. The world tipped on its axis the last three years and it's not going to go back to equilibrium. It's not going to go back to normal. And we need to make sure our leaders have, feel like that they have the opportunity and the support to try some new things in their schools. We've talked a lot about relationships and seeking connection and getting others to higher ground and seeing their divine potential. So we really feel like we need leadership in our district that is wholehearted, that everybody is bodied and 100% and that it's about making sure that you're getting people to higher ground. And that's our students and our employees. So we've worked hard over the last few months to make sure that this is the tone that they, that they understand that we want set in our schools. We put together this strategic planning timeline and I want you to just quickly look at the dates. Here's where we are, over here on the left side. Starting in August when we came in, and I'm going to have David Clyde stand up here in just a second, but we did listening sessions with almost every employee group in our district. We have met and listened and probably spent at least 45 minutes with each group. We've taken notes and we've picked out some key trends that we've seen and we want to share those with you here real quickly. We've been making sure that we've embraced this change and kind of stabilized Weaver School District. You'll remember that at the district level and in the schools, we've got a turnover of almost 50% of our leaders. 50% of our leaders are in new positions, including the entire superintendency. So we didn't want to come in right off the bat and just say, here's what we're going to do. We want to kind of come in, get everything kind of stabilized, set a tone. And this really helped us to set the tone of where we're headed. The big thing that we've spent a lot of time on, great board, is we want to make sure our people understand, besides the things we've talked about already, that Weaver School District is a professional learning community. Our main job is to make sure students learn, that they grow and they learn. So we have spent many of our PD moments with our leaders, helping them understand that we've got to have a better system, a more robust system around, can you tell me how every student in your class teacher is doing and why? And what supports they need? We're drilling down to those individual students and the only way that we can do that is to have a really strong framework of professional learning communities in place. And that's where they're looking at data, they're tracking how students are doing, they're intervening. We have spent probably the last three or four months really reemphasizing that this is the way forward, okay? We brought a new student information system aboard, which is going to support that. That student information system is going to help us with the data that we need around kids in real time. And then, like I said, we've been setting this tone around, we see you, we've got you. As we move forward, I'll talk a little bit more about some of the things that we're going to do here, but I'm going to ask Dave and Clyde, I'm going to pull up another PowerPoint here, if that's okay, to talk about what they learned from the listening sessions, if that's okay. So I'll turn the time over to these two great gentlemen. And can I tell you, I couldn't have picked two better guys than these two right here. They understand, we see you, we've got you.
But I thought, rather than stand, if you want, you want to stand, you want to sit here, I don't know how they can see us.
Yeah, well, they're not.
I think if you sit, they'll probably be able to see you.
Yeah.
And then Clyde, I'll just swap you.
Yeah, that's great, that's great. Okay, Clyde. So these two have put together a lot of the trends that we saw that came out of our listening sessions. So I'll go ahead.
Davis is going to do that.
So we broke it into two sections. There were 26 listening sessions in total in the teacher world. And when we say teacher world, you have to understand that in that we included all of the elementary, all of the secondary, but we also brought in mental health specialists, nurses, transportation. So we just sort of called it a teacher world, but it was all really probably more the support staff as well as the educators themselves. You can see the groupings there. Inside the two first bullets where it said all elementary, all secondary, it's pretty cool because we actually met with all of the elementaries and all of the high schools in kind of comb grouping. So there will be two or three schools together that were actually coming in online in a virtual meet with us. If you'll click the button for me, Gina, these are the questions that the amazing superintendent asked the people. And we just sort of had an hour for each timeframe. The first question that she asked was kind of fun. She would say, what's going well in your school or district? Now, remember Pam, during those meetings, was doing exactly what she's doing now and she was recording just what the people were sharing. So there was a, there was a collection of the things that are going well. And then the center question, what support are you in need of to best serve the students in Weaver School District? And that's, notice I underline that, that's where Clyde and I will spend our time today instead of covering all of the topics. And the last one was fun for us. She said, how can a new superintendency support you? So we enjoyed the comments that came from that too. But now what we're going to do is walk through just sort of a little bit of a breakdown in terms of what some of the things they shared were. The, this one's entitled, overall concerns from teacher slash faculty listening sessions. And notice what we did for you. We just grouped them. There were 231 responses. And what we did was we tried to make the graph depict how many times those things were said. It took Clyde and I a while to actually go through and pull out those main topics from those, all of those 26 sections. I'll give you a quick note, less admin time. That was the very first one that we started with. That one had at least six or more responses and you can kind of see, you can figure the percentages back for 231 as you go through. But that was just an idea. So you can see tech, behavioral issues, you can see parent pay, you can see sub shortages, bell schedules. And now what we'll do to just give you a little bit of information is we'll show you some of the commonalities that came within each one of those subgroups.
Just the last, less admin time, is that them kind of saying, just let us teach?
You're going to see it. No, no, you're going to see it. I'm going to give it.
Don't take our admin out of the building.
Oh, okay.
And so that, it has to do with that a little bit, but.
Paul, hopefully we'll make that make more sense for you. So here it is, the first one. The teacher said, could you please keep the admins in the building more? Oftentimes they're pulled out to a district meeting here and there and those kinds of things. And we would like an assistant administrator in our elementary schools as well. Now, you have to remember that really, a credit to our superintendent is really what she was trying to do, in my humble opinion, was to get her finger on the pulse. You know, where are people at? What are they feeling? What are they thinking? And so this was giving insight to a new superintendency just in terms of where things were. So that's less admin. Dress code, cell phone. Help with a cell phone policy was asked for. Cell phones are a huge problem in all classrooms, not enough support. The cell phone, I won't call it a pandemic, but the cell phone complexity, is that okay? Of our world is that they appear frequently in our schools and in our classrooms. And then also they were asking, is there a possibility that we could look at a district-wide dress code policy? So remember, we're not solving this today, we're just showing you what they said.
And listen, and you remember the pie chart, this was not the dominant.
Yeah.
Right. And you can see from the pie chart that's there in front of you, the ones that were said the most often, right? Percentage of the time. Calendar slash schedule, we need more early outs for staff. Now, this was a secondary comment right here. The elementary schools have the early out Wednesdays and they have a master schedule that's different. This particular comment came from secondary world. We need more early outs for staff meetings to feel connected as a school. Longer PD time requested. Some small segments, 20 minutes a day are good, but we need longer sessions of PD to most effectively meet the needs of our students.
Tell them what PD means.
Professional. And just so you know, all of those were a largely secondary request. The elementaries did not have as much input in those areas because of the way their schedules are filled.
You'll remember, we changed our schedule during the pandemic to a 20-minute later start. And what we're hearing from our folks is that was great during that time. But now, because of the needs we're seeing in our kids, we need time as a collective professional learning community to figure out how to address those needs. And so we'll talk a little bit more about that as we move forward.
The my student world, that was the SIS, the Student Information System that the district has used for the last 20 years. These were some of the comments. The counselors have a hard time changing schedules. Students can't see graduation requirements. Teachers can't see the whole student. They only get bits and pieces which are not enough. They can't see WIC students on the rolls and it's slow and not effective. As the years went by, that my student was becoming less effective just because they were trying to build the pieces as they went and it was becoming more and more complex with the needs of the schools.
This is a big one, I can.
The my student is frustrating, slow, doesn't do enough. Can we have the updates performed in the summer than rather interrupting us during the school year? And then finally, we have no ability to track student progress in data in real time because it was sluggish and always behind.
We want to thank the board for allowing us the option to go to a, for a new SIS. I think this system that we've, Power School that we've adopted, teachers are going to have a data dashboard right in front of them all the time where they can track how kids are doing in real time versus performing at an autopsy later when the grade comes out. They're going to know how they're doing leading up to that grade. Does that make sense?
I like that.
Yes, sorry, I didn't mean necessarily the way to look at it.
That was true.
That's how we felt with my student is, oh, they, okay, the student failed. Well, what interventions could I have done better if I would have had more viable information at my fingertips sooner?
Awesome. Mental health counselors, full-time counselor, mental health specialist at each elementary school. Currently, they have access, they're just shared. Most counselors have a half-time counselor. Most elementaries have a half-time counselor. We need more help with mental health for students and for teachers. Remember, post-pandemic kinds of things have been impacting the world that we live in. And it's getting better, but it's still, complexities exist.
We are dealing with this probably worse than anything right now.
And just to give you a precursor, it's manifest a lot of times in behavior and that's coming up as an item as well. The PLC world, we need more support and time with understanding post-pandemic. Open our work, complexities that children and families face. More time to collaborate with other schools, especially the teachers that are the only ones that teach that in the building. This is a high school comment with the singletons that are the only one in their building that have that, that subject or that category department. More planned PLC with other schools, more PLC time, longer times, more often. The 20 minutes is good, but not enough.
We, I've heard the post-pandemic, 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 but I think that a lot of the challenges we faced are, that would have, they would have occurred with or without them.
Just a class survey.
Sure. The cell phone probably was going to happen no matter what.
Yeah.
Class sizes need to be smaller. Legislature has worked to reduce the class sizes up to eight, three, but when they move to the fourth and beyond, they get bigger, they grow.
You know, teachers, they always want less kids so they can go more intensively with their support.
Parent and pay benefits. Parent professionals have no benefits, leave or incentives. They need more of an incentive to stay. And the two state parts that we have found that it is very difficult to keep them because they can find something better somewhere else that has a benefit attached. We rely on our pairs, our IEPs are complicated, there are huge needs for assistance in our classes. We need to find ways to keep the pairs employed.
Tell the board what IEP is.
Individual Education Plan in Special Education. Sub shortage, the sub shortage makes it hard to cover the schools' needs. Now, this is fun. If you wanted to look at sub shortage, it's a, it's a fairly good size. They, it was, it was mentioned a lot. And really what they said was that. So that one comment was the one that was said, the sub shortage makes it hard to cover the needs in our schools. Bottom line. It's, it's a really difficult thing these days to get subs to actually cover classrooms.
Well, there's times, Dave, when schools start and there's not enough coverage and you have to scramble to get teachers or people to prepare to go cover classes.
And parent professionals become a sub that day. The bell schedule, that 20-minute window, is there a plan? This was asked, is there a plan to actually return that 20-minute instructional time? It was a question on the table and then we need more time in the classrooms for instruction. Those two were tied together. HR, new teachers need more intensive support, want a team licenses, endorsements, professional development, instructional coaching. The new teacher world and entry and retention there is one that needs some love and attention in terms of effort with just giving them what they need to be successful in their first year.
Can I just interject here? We try so hard and work so diligently to attract great teachers. What we're finding, because USVE has now said to districts, local district, you're responsible to get a license and endorse, they used to do it. So that has fallen to us. When we came into this role, we had some data presented to us from HR, from Lori Adams and Nicole Mibas, where we had 83 new teachers in their third year, which is, that's the magical year. You have to have all of your requirements done for your licensing by that third year. That hadn't started the process. Pandemic is one of the cracks we had in the system and they needed that support. So we have had to scramble this year to make sure that we put some supports in place. And HR's done a wonderful job where we're working with those 83 teachers to make sure we don't lose them. Because if we lose them, they either have to go take those, get their licensing through another district, which is, they can start that three-year process over again in another district where they have to go take very expensive classes at the universities and we lose them because they can't work full-time and go to school full-time. So we have got to figure some things out with this piece and I would, I would.
Is that a legislative?
It is.
For three years?
It is.
Really quickly on that one too, remember that the teachers that we're talking about were also in the listening sessions. And so it was them who were saying.
Help us.
A little more support, yeah.
Help us, yeah.
The tech department, the teachers are blocked from too many things and don't get to use the same tools as other districts. And that was largely different apps and things like that that they were wanting to use educationally. A program to help monitor the usage of Chromebooks in classrooms was also desired of the teachers. Behavior issues, here's that bullet. Behavior issues are becoming more and more of an issue. Behaviors are getting bigger and more frequent. We need to. We need to, uh, help to manage the trend. We are need, uh, sorry, we need additional training on trauma-informed practices and implementation as well.
Yeah, so behaviors. Bad behavior.
Yeah.
Acting out. No, but a lot of, you know, some are, but a lot of them are that acting out. Kids, what we're finding, Doug, is kids are having a more difficult time regulating themselves for the whole school day, even, especially our littles right now. Our, our little, our little children have, many of them are not used, you figure kindergarten through a third grader have been so impacted, they didn't know what a full school day looked like, to be honest. And so then we're almost having to reteach and catch those younger kids up. And then our, our, our high school kids during the pandemic, this is what we're looking at, is they went into that social media vortex. They just, that was what they relied on during that time for connectivity, and we're finding that they're having a difficult time pulling away from social media and focusing on their studies. And so classroom management has become a bigger issue for our teachers, and they need, they need skills, they need more skills to do, manage that.
Along that line, too, we did notice that the behavioral comments were actually made elementary, junior high, high school. We heard that through the whole.
It wasn't just an elementary.
It was. Even though, I will say, as an elementary representative, one of the things that we've noticed that's been really tricky for us is those first few months of kindergarten every year, um, those little ones were coming in with, uh, a lot of lack, lacking in, in just the sociality and the functionality in a classroom. They can get it after a little while, but boy, they were, we were having more complex behaviors in kindergarten than we were used to as we were kind of coming off of some of the changes that came with the pandemic. Special ed in Canyon View?
Yes. Really quickly, and I hate to interrupt, um, but you hit right on it. What is, what will full-day kindergarten do for us? The positive, negative, the genome.
Yeah.
Too much in the classroom, too, not, and you're saying, elaborate this, this list for that point.
I, I would say we are supportive. Weber School District is actually poised, if those funding mechanisms are put into place, Weber School District is poised, really, to be able to implement that almost everywhere. We have, uh, five out of twenty-nine schools that we would have to be very creative with in terms of, of capital or building space, but the rest of our schools really could absorb a full-day kindergarten program. And, and, and not speaking for the three of us and the district, may I?
Please.
Uh, we are supportive of full-day kindergarten, John. That helps a lot with helping those little kids get the skills that they need to be successful early, so.
Any other questions, John? That's a great question. Okay, moving forward.
Uh, spend enrollment is rising, and all of the paperwork can be tricky. The burden was the word they used. We need, uh, help hiring for our basic positions. Uh, same problem they have in sped, we have everywhere else, is that it's just hard to fill the positions. Canyon View, uh, we need, this was an actual Canyon View comment, but it came up a few times. We need to feel valued and additional personnel supports are needed as we respond to escalating student needs and behaviors. Remember that Canyon View houses our life school, our life skills program.
Can I come out on this? The, with, transportation's always been underfunded. The state requires us to provide transportation for a mile and a half for elementary, two miles per secondary. And that was always my, the bane of my existence was transportation. And, uh, but now the bane of my existence is special ed when it comes to funding. The, uh, the state just does not fund special ed. Every LEA that does a special ed program is heavily subsidizing from the regular K-12 population. Um, our, our deficit there is significant. If the legislature really wanted to do something for public education, they would fund special ed, and it is not happening. Just that, we met with our special ed yesterday, our leaders there, and we meet once a month on budget issues. It is our biggest high priority deficit.
We still get a WPU with the special ed students.
Right.
Correct. But that, that stops at a certain age, and they can continue to.
The add-on, the add-on is not funded. And the self-contained not funded. The preschool not funded.
Yet all required.
It's something that we have no choice.
The state requires them, but goodness knows.
They require, and then there's an I, it's driven by an IEP. And our folks are very good at their IEPs, and they are very diligent, they just don't, they, they give what, that, that, they, they, uh, it's a really cool process, and, uh, it's, it's something we have to do, and, uh, and it's not being funded. I've been raising the alarm for three years, and the JLC always has, this is my own rant, always has other priorities. And to me, it is the highest priority. That's, I'm just saying, not my spoke soapbox, sorry.
In the curriculum world, more support with curriculum changes. When there are changes, it's hard to learn and keep up with all that is on our plates. More opportunities to work with other schools for PD. Be selective about the programs that are rolled out. We don't have time to do it all and do it well.
We heard this a lot, you'll see, too much on our plates, too much on our plates. Help us to know what you want prioritized.
And I could, and I'll add to the curriculum piece, a lot of it, right now in the elementary world has been the, the letters training and the ninety-five percent training rolled out by the state of Utah, which are both really, really excellent programs for, for literacy. But they were very, very intensive in the time that the teacher had to put into just the absolute learning that he or she had to, to gain to be effective in the program. Attendance policy, if there anything we can do to combat chronic attendance issues, this was heard again, elementary, junior high, high school. We need some teeth in the attendance policy. Accountability for parents to get their kids to school would help us as well. And then?
That's, that's something that really has to come out of state, isn't it?
Yeah, they, they have overturned that feel that you remember, I tried to remember the number on it, uh, but the feel that said that, you know, parents have the right to keep their children healthy in the pandemic. They did allow us to, to come back with some teeth, and so we are seeing some improvements as the first of the year, but we still have a, a pretty large segment of our population that's chronic with truism right now, and we're trying to pull them back to school. So we have, uh, revamped our attendance policy to reflect, you know, but we, you have to do so many different interventions before you can refer certain students, you know, and families and for truancy, and it, it puts a heavy load on our, our principals to try to track those kids and get them there. So if we've got them there, we've got them, we've got to. But you need to be there, right? And that's what we're trying, that's what we're trying to make sure they understand. All right, Clyde?
Okay, I, I'm gonna go over to administrative listening session that we conducted. We had some of the same, uh, bullet points there, you can see how the, how the breakdown happened, uh, with lean administration, dress code, my student, PLC, uh, pair, uh, pay and benefits, sub shortage, bell schedule, technology, behavior. Uh, gonna talk a little bit about Canyon View, sped, curriculum, attendance, and safety.
Clyde, when they say dress code, does that mean like inappropriate dress?
Yeah, yeah, and we're, we're talking a little bit about that in a minute, Robert, but yeah.
It's not like uniforms.
No, 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 just appropriate dress.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, lean administration, the Weber School District is bigger than you think, and we are too thin at the top. People who work at the district office are talented, but they are spread too thin. Uh, principals are trying to be instructional leaders, they worry about teachers and deal with behaviors. They wanna do the job well, but it's hard because they're spread too thin. Additional interns would provide more support for both elementary and junior high schools. So like Dave said, we kind of hear that in both, uh, levels there. Dress code, aligned district dress code policy. So, uh, Robert, to answer your question right now, uh, different schools, we got a basic district policy, but di- different schools got different focus points in the dress code, and they want it to be consistent. So if a kid go from one school to, to an add, to our principal move, the dress code is consistent and it's easier to implement.
Okay.
All right. Uh, my student, same thing we talked about before, need to work, it need to work the way it's supposed to. We need a data platform with real-time data that effectively help teachers collect information on student achievement.
We feel like we're gonna whirl the precipice of dressing.
Yeah, I think we're gonna head in the right direction there. PLC time, return to secondary. Dave's men- mentioned, when we changed schedule, it didn't affect the elementary the same as secondary. Secondary lost their, uh, a lot of professional development time or PLC time. They would like to have that back. Uh, peril, same thing, peril retention and benefits will help retain those. Substitute teachers are short supply, how can we encourage more people to sign up to substitute? Uh, the bell schedule, teacher need a stretch of time back, talked about that. Secondary school need consistent early out to provide professional learning community. Uh, tech.
Okay, on that, early out for secondary schools, it's, it, the elementary's very consistent. Everyone is Wednesday.
Right.
But you were saying that the, the, with the secondary, it's all over.
Right.
No, 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 they're, they're on Wednesdays, the secondaries are on Wednesday, but we reduced them, we, we stopped the sheer amount of early outs we were doing and moved that time to in the morning. Uh, and that twenty minutes of time in the morning, teachers just don't have time to get together in twenty minutes and do anything meaningfully or, or work with students. Um, and the other challenge I need everybody to understand, too, is with our transportation, we're still dropping students off at the same time we always have.
So they're.
So principals are running around making sure kids are supervised while we're, our teachers are trying for twenty minutes to pull together and collaborate. It's, it, it's chaotic, and we need more concentrated time.
And at the secondary with the early outs, because it's been like, I don't know, the last five or six years, every year, we're doing something different.
Yep.
We had late start, or early, yeah, late start, and then we did, during the pandemic, we did early out every other week, and now it's like, last year we had more, this year we have less. And from a parent perspective, it's like, we, anyone at the secondary level is just like, what is going on with these early outs? It's like, the elementary's so great, we know it's every week, but it'd be great to have that more consistent for more than every year is different.
Awesome, school to school.
Well, I think at the secondary, it's, I don't know, but you're right, sometimes it is school to school.
We're gonna talk.
I know, we would be good to have consistent, like in the elementary world, every school.
Yeah, but it's been frustrating, cause, and then for me, I'm like, today's an early out? I had no idea. And so it's.
Our goal is to make sure that we align for families, even one day of the week that they align on. And we'll talk about that. Sherry.
Maybe that's why it's so easy for them to say just stay home.
Yeah.
It's easier to try and figure it out.
I'm, I'm not exactly, we're gonna, we've gotta do some work there for sure, and we'll talk about what we're planning to do around that. Go ahead, Clyde, we're gonna have to pick up a little speed.
Yeah, we're gonna, I'm going fast, but Dave touched on a lot of this. Tech, some technologies, you monitor the use of their technology. For example, there's a program called Guardian, where teacher can monitor where kids are going on in Chromebook or in class. So they want something like that. Chromebook management, we need help, we need to help parents and students understand the hills are too much screen time. You wanna go to the next one, do you? Uh, but also with that, they wanted some digital citizenship, uh, training for our students. Behavior, trauma of the pandemic, endemic and societal cha- uh, challenges are greatly impacting families and students' behavior in our schools. An example that they gave, especially in elementary, several hundred kids in a part-time counselor, the need, the need of students are not being met. Elementary schools need a full-time counselor at every school to help with tier-one behavior support. With regard to behavior, we're often forced to focus on the twenty percent of disruptive students. Uh, we could use help supporting the other eighty percent. And the MTSS is a, is a, a multi-tiered student support system that we're looking at implementing in our district, so we're working on that.
We'll talk more about that at another time, but.
Sped in Canyon View, noted programs, know what programs look like at Canyon View. Canyon View has systems in place that can help all schools. Uh, curriculum and instruction, we appreciate site-based decision-making, but we need consistency in our district initiative, uh, uniformly in curri- uh, curriculum and standards and assessment tools. We need to focus on instruction with technology tools as a support.
Can I, can I speak to this really quick? This is vital. What we're hearing, and this is something we're hearing across the board, is all of this technology we rolled out the last few years is fantastic, it saved us during the pandemic, right, when we had to close our schools down for that short period of time, and luckily we were able to keep our schools going, and that was due to Dr. Stevens' great leadership. But what we're finding now is we have all of this technology on, on our teachers' plates, they don't know how to marry technology with good instruction. We've gotta say, good instruction is where you start, that's your foundation, and here's how a technology tool can support that. Right now, we're seeing a lot of teachers that think that putting their lessons up on canvas is teaching. And if you'll go through and do these things, we need them to understand that that Chromebook and that technology is vital, but it can't replace you as a teacher in good instruction. And that's one of our goals going forward, is to align those two things better. Does that make sense?
Parents aren't real enthusiastic about their children getting an assignment online to do.
We're not quite.
Right.
Yep, yep.
Our teachers need less on their plates and more time to master instruction and technology. Attendance, students aren't coming to school, and kind of from the pandemic. Uh, can we come up with a strategic plan that include the best practice?
Yep.
Uh, security, not all school have secure doors, I think we're working on that right now, especially in elementary. And that's pretty much it. Any questions?
How many questions about our, our feedback? That, that's a synopsis. Like I said, there were pages and pages and pages of notes from each listening session, but those were the trends that came out of it.
In a way, aren't they asking you to pull a rabbit out of a basket?
Feels that way, Doug.
It's a wisdom side.
Yeah.
We need more instruction time in the classroom.
Yep.
We need more preparation time, man.
We've got.
Those are mutually exclusive.
And we're gonna come up with some kind of the perfect balance, Doug, and that's, that's what we're gonna talk about here in just a second. We only have until nine thirty-five scheduled for this piece, and then I wanna make sure we get to the second piece, but I, with Sherry out there, let's bring Sherry in.
You know, it's almost like the pandemic, I'm a kid from a cornfield, you know, so it's like the pandemic opened the gate and all the cows got out, and it's getting hard getting back.
Yeah. Come on in, Sherry.
And getting, getting control.
I'm gonna click for her. So Sherry, we are, we're already a little bit behind, and I have these great focus and so I've played in, but I was just hoping maybe that we could cover two pieces if you are okay with that. Sherry Hyder, can I just give her a shout-out? If you know Sherry, Sherry is our, uh, curriculum and assessment director, and she is fantastic, as you know, and she has put together, really helped us with our strategic planning in that she's been able to compile data that we can bring to our administrators in real time, and our teachers and say, here's how our kids are doing. She plays such a vital role. I'm just gonna ask her to take two pieces so you can see where we're headed here a little bit. Uh, Sherry, this is the district comparison data, really quick, if you don't mind. I'm gonna start with, you know that the three areas that we are heavily scrutinized in terms of student performance are our three content areas, uh, English, language, arts, math, and science. And I kinda wanna give you a feel of how we're doing in comparison to other districts, so if you don't think we just kind of dive into that.
Yeah, do you wanna take it down to seventy-five percent?
Absolutely.
And maybe make a.
Absolutely. There you go.
Perfect. So, um, I don't know if this data is going to be shared with all of you as well, but um, all I did in this first portion, um, this was kind of a response to the audit that occurred last, last year, a couple years ago. Um, anyway, I took each district, the forty-one LEAs in the state of Utah, organized them alphabetically, and just put their proficiency and growth in twenty nineteen and twenty-twenty-one. Um, kinda wanted to see where we landed, but all of those are organized just alphabetically on this first tab. So Jane, if you'll go to the second tab.
Do you think to look at every district, but let's look at how we're doing in comparison?
So these are organized, um, twenty twenty-one is furthest to the left, twenty nineteen is in columns D and E. These are the percent proficient, so the percentage of our students who earned threes or fours on the RISE and Utah Spire Plus and the Dynamic Learning Maps, which is for our severely disabled students. So these are rank ordered all the way from the top performing district to the bottom performing district with the forty-one districts represented. So you can see as we scroll.
Like this is English Language Arts.
Yep, yep. So as we scroll, Weber District will be highlighted. So there we are, up again, twenty twenty-one is in columns A and B, twenty twenty, or twenty nineteen is in columns C and E. Remember, we didn't test in twenty twenty because of the pandemic, right? No testing occurred. Now, the one bright spot there is that the growth was in the forty-sixth percentile. So growth is kinda like when you're taking your newborn babies into the doctor's office and they measure their head circumference and their length and their weight, and they tell you the percentile that your child lies in. As long as they're in the fiftieth percentile or above, you're like, okay, everything's great, right? Um, the state considers anywhere between the fortieth percentile and the sixtieth percentile to be equivalent to a year's growth. Okay? So it, we were right in that target range. Um, you'll notice that everybody in the state of Utah, the overall proficiency levels did fall. This was a pandemic-related thing we're, that we're trying to come out of. Cause in twenty nineteen, our, um, we, we maintained the same ranking, but our proficiency was four percentage points higher, which is interesting.
But we are not content with where we are in comparison to other districts. You can see the need right here for a more strategic focus on performance outcomes in the classroom and in these three areas. You'll see a trend here. This, this, this is just not who we are. This is not who we are, and everybody dealt with the pandemic, right? This is everybody being compared across the board. And I really believe that our folks are working their guts out, but the things that we're hearing from them and their listening sessions is, there's so much on my plate. Help us focus more intently on what it is that we really need to, to focus on. And that, that, I think we're gonna see these scores gradually bump up. I have no doubt about it, but we're gonna have to put some systems in place.
That's another question. Or do we see any of our test scores tied at all to funding? Cause I know some districts have more funding than we do. Is there any correlation or no?
No, no, that, that's good news. But there's obviously scrutiny now with HB, HB two fifteen and the choices that parents have to look at other options for their kids. It's even more paramount importance that we be able to articulate at the school level. Parent comes in, they need to understand where their child is and why. And we've gotta do a better job, we've gotta do a better job in this area. I know we have the expertise, but our PLC process has to be more robust. And that's where we've spent.
Gina?
Yes, go ahead, John.
So really quickly, uh, I heard, I thought I heard Sherry say that this was part, a majority of us taking care of the audit last year. Understanding if that's the case, we would very first state, first district in the state rate it. So our numbers based off my own opinion is going to be less than what you're saying we actually have. So I owe the people within our district to understand that, you know what I mean?
Yeah, well, unfortunately, yeah, sorry, John. Unfortunately, these, these scores aren't a part of the audit at all. These are actually how our kids perform in relation to other districts, yeah.
Yeah, John only was saying is that this particular set of data was compiled in response to the audit. Um, you know, we, we were really determined to find out exactly where we were. The audit gave us a positioning of eighth, uh, from the bottom in the state of Utah. And we wanted to find out exactly where we were in each of the disciplines, not just eighth, right? And it also did not look at, uh, growth at all, it was, it was simply based on proficiencies.
Here's our math, we'll take a look at math next.
So again, rank word, and you'll notice some districts are popping up near the top, uh, every single time. Uh, we have gone and visited some districts to kind of pick their brains about what they're doing. But here's mathematics. Um, even though we scored a higher proficiency in twenty nineteen, our ranking in the state actually went up in twenty twenty-one um, due to that hit that we took with the pandemic. The very bright spot here, though, is the growth at the fifty-second percentile, um, which puts us in a pretty good positioning. Um, if you scroll back up to the top, the highest growth in the state was sixty-four point five. So.
And science?
Yep.
Science, we have work to do as well.
So science, we are, uh, this is our, our lowest area according to proficiency rankings in the state. Not necessarily the proficiency scores themselves, but the rankings overall in the state. Um, you can see twenty nineteen, we were thirty-eight percent of our students proficient and twenty twenty-one thirty-seven percent. But our growth is right where we need it to be. So overall, from these three data sets, our growth is, is in that target range where we need it to be, but our proficiency levels are still quite low, right? Much lower than what we would, we would want them to be.
But I can tell you right now, look at y'all in the eye, we are, we are so much better than this. We, we are going to make sure that, uh, this, that we move up the, the chart. And I, I don't necessarily, I'm not a big fan of always looking at how other districts are doing in comparison, but can we learn from some other districts and how they're, how they're approaching some of these things and bring some of those best practices into our district? Absolutely. And I think that's, that's kind of what we're intent on doing. We're already in the process of talking to other districts. So just know that we're not content with this. This is an area that we believe we're gonna see great, great strides in over the next two or three years as we get some systems in place. Right. I want Sherry also to just talk really quickly about this, Sherry. And I, I know that this can be a little bit, uh, overwhelming, uh, especially to board members, cause there's a lot going on here. But we just kinda give them the essence of it, yeah?
Yeah. So when our, um, accountability plan was redesigned several years ago, um, you have to meet state accountability rules and federal accountability rules as part of ESSA, the Every Student Succeeds Act, right? And in our plan, um, one of the, the components that was put there to make sure that schools are given support to improve if they're not where they need to be, was the identification of TSI and CSI schools. So TSI is Targeted Support and Intervention, and CSI is Comprehensive Support and Intervention. Sometimes they'll blend that last word into improvement, it depends on who you talk to, right? But, um, the way that you get into TSI, so you start with TSI, and then if you don't make it in TSI, some schools will move forward to CSI, and I'll explain that. But the way that you get into TSI is a particular subgroup is in the lowest five percent of the state for two years running. Now, you wonder what that subgroups might be. They could be things like economically disadvantaged, so students who are on free reduced lunch. They could be, um, English learners that we now refer to as multilingual learners.
You can see these acronyms up here, English Language Learners, Economically Disadvantaged, Students with Disabilities.
And then all of our ethnic subgroups are there as well, so Hispanic and Black and Asian and so forth. Um, these are our Title One schools. Now, the process is pretty rigorous, especially for Title Ones, and that's why I've got them pulled apart here, um, for you to view. The process begins with an identification year. It does not count in your number of years to get out. So you get the identification year. The problem with, with counting the identification year like they used to, is that typically we don't get the data until quite late. So you don't have a lot of time to, to act on it. But then you have four years after your identification year to get out. To get out, you must have two consecutive years that you don't fall in the bottom five percent of the state. Okay, so you'll notice, if you look at lines eight and nine, uh, North Park was identified for our English learners and students with disabilities way back in twenty eighteen when the system first started. So twenty nineteen would have been their first year really in the program. Now, they did some great things at North Park and actually made it above the bottom five percent in twenty nineteen, which counted as their first year to exit. Now, because of the pandemic, twenty twenty and twenty-one, everything was on hiatus and you just stayed where you were. So if you were in, you were in, if you were out, you were out. Okay? Twenty twenty-two came along, um, the data was, was reevaluated, and North Park met their goal for the second year. So they would not be considered in TSI for those two categories any longer. Now, this is a very fluid thing, you can be in and out, right? So a school may go out and then be dropped back in the very next year for the same or a different category. Okay? So the issue with our Title One schools is that if they don't make it out of, of TSI within the four years, they are moved automatically into CSI, which means the state comes in and offers their help. Um, there's some grants available for some additional training and so forth. Um, but, but we would rather be able to deal with it here, right, locally, and have our people help folks, um, you know, move through these. So, and again, you can see like Washington Terrace, they weren't identified in twenty eighteen, they weren't identified until twenty nineteen, right?
So just go with the.
Now, go, yeah, this is our whole district. Now, I've put the, the Title One schools back in here. Um, we have forty-six schools. Thirty-four of them are in TSI for one category or another. Um, some, as you can see, are in for multiple categories, um, up to five. And it's just, it's one of those things that you've got to be very attentive to because you can see, based on the year you're in, you've gotta keep really close eye on when, when you gotta be out, right? So it can be a daunting task for a principal and you, you know, look at, they're Roy Junior High there.
You say the total was forty-six and how many were involved?
Thirty-four, so seventy-four percent of our schools are in for at least one category at this point.
We have great work to do around this particular area, drilling down with the kids that are struggling most profusely and buoying them up and putting the right supports in place for them. And we've been having a lot of discussions around this particular topic, but we wanted to show you and just be completely transparent of some of the challenges that we're dealing with right now. Um, and we believe that we, we're gonna put some plans in place to address these things. And I'll talk about that strategic planning piece here in just a second. But you have to look at where you're at. You have to acknowledge where you're at, accept it, and say, okay, what are we gonna do about it before you can, you can address it? Uh, we have showed this data, we've been very transparent with our administrators, and they're not happy. They're not content. Uh, our teachers are content. This kind of roils you in the belly a little bit because we know we have great work to do. And we're going to have to solicit support of parents to get our kids to school. We've gotta have a math school, that is a part of this problem, is attendance, regular attendance. If we, if we don't have them there, we can't serve their needs. And then we also have to put tools in our teachers' toolbox to address more effectively some of the learning difficulties that our kids are, are, are coming to school with and some of the challenges. One of the things that we're really going to address too is the behavior piece. When students are engaged at, at school and, and learning and feeling confident and as courteous it sounds, we've got you, they feel that, then these things are gonna change. When the teacher knows how to address those things. Go ahead, Jan.
So, so would some professional development that, that takes our schools that are proficient and, and marries them to some of our schools that aren't proficient?
Yes.
Be a, a strategy that they start exploring or have they been exploring?
That's a great question, Jan. And I, you know, and you're right, yes, the answer is yes. What we believe is the system that has to be solid in every single one of our schools is that professional learning community system where every single grade level in the elementaries and every subject level in the high school and secondary are getting together and actually talking individual kids. How are they doing? Why are they where they are? What interventions do they need to move them from where they are to someplace better? And right now, that's why we're working so hard on re-establishing that PLC system because we believe that system is one of about three that has to be solid. Uh, the other one is the MTSS one that Clyde talked about, where we've gotta put supports around mental health and behavior. But if a child is engaged in the classroom and learning and supported, guess what happens to behavior? Behaviors go down.
I, I, I guess the question I'm asking is do they even know what interventions to put in place?
Right.
Like even academically or behaviorally? I mean, I can talk about kids till the end of the world, but if I don't have an idea of what, what intervention has been successful or how to implement that.
Absolutely, Jan. First, we've gotta identify who's struggling, right? And then the second step is exactly what you're talking about. And yes, to answer your question, we've got to pull in, uh, and have our teachers have that PD that's going to help them put those tools in their toolbox that I talked about. And that's been very difficult because we don't have captured time, especially in the secondary, to do that. We don't have the PD time to do that, and that's come out in a lot of our listening sessions as well.
So there are a couple of things too that we've been collaborating around recently, just some simple fixes for this because if, if you'll pop back over to the Title One, um, we have several schools that, you know, if they don't make it out this year, they're going to move into that CSI process. Um, we've been looking specifically at students with disabilities, cause you'll notice that's pretty much on, on everyone who's been identified. Students with disabilities and multilingual learners, those ELS. Um, some very simple things that can be done are getting kids practice on the RISE and Utah Spire Plus test prior to the day that they actually take the test. You know, because this is based on a, a single moment in time when these kids are taking these assessments. And if that's the first time they've ever seen them, um, no wonder they don't know how to use some of the tools. And, you know, they don't understand the rigor of the questions. So that's a very easy thing. Um, with our, I was talking with our, our special ed director yesterday, some of our students with disabilities are a little more sensitive to the environment in which they take the assessment. Simply testing with their teacher could in fact cause a, an increase in their score. And in some schools, that's not happening. It's just they're, they're being tested, you know, in whatever room they're in second period, right? And so looking at some of those very easy strategies that we could, we could implement this year, um, you know, keep teaching strong till the end, but do some of these very simple tweaks to our technique, and I think we'll, we'll see some growth just there.
We believe that a, a return to just a very concerted focus on student learning outcomes is gonna be the ticket. We really believe that. We know we're here for student learning, right? But more strategic, more, more focused in on, on the, the strategies that Jan's talking about, Sherry are talking about are gonna be key. And that is part of our plan moving forward. I know we've got another segment today to get through, and so I just wanna thank Sherry. Sherry, that's what we're gonna cover today. One piece, uh, we did want to tell you about really quickly is Sherry and, and the superintendent she's put together with secondary and elementary a survey that's gonna go out to our parents in the next week or so, with your blessing. And, um, what we're really gonna ask the parents is how, what schedule are they feeling good about? Is the twenty-minute late start really a positive impact on families and negative impact on families? What would they like to see? And then we're also going to, uh, pose that same question to our teachers and try to figure out with that data, is it time to perhaps look at returning to, uh, in the secondary seven forty-five start and building some PD into the Wednesday, aligning Wednesdays in the secondary and elementary for family where our folks have more time to dig in and really get the skills and the, and the intention behind these things that we wanna improve, solidify in each school. We, we're not gonna make progress if we're asking them to pull together every morning for fifteen minutes when the chaos of the morning start is upon them. And so we'll share that data with you all in a, in a morning study session, but we are gonna send that, that survey out probably the start of next week. Okay, if you're okay with that? And we'll give you, make sure you all get a copy of that survey. Okay? Anything else you wanna say about that survey?
Um, no, other than there were a group of us meeting together, um, speaking about Portrait of a Graduate, which is a component that's on the survey. Um, one of the groups that they suggested surveying that we hadn't thought about, but I think it's a really good idea, is, um, maybe our business members around the area. Um, for example, uh, those who are on the foundation board. You know, they might represent, uh, some need, they would understand what skills and disposition students need as they leave our school system. So it might be a good.
We'll introduce that, the competencies around Portrait of a Graduate coming out because that's gonna be embedded in our strategic plan as well. I know we're giving you a lot today for, especially for early morning, but we wanted to give you a feel for the things we've been working on and grappling with. Okay, Sherry, thank you so much for being here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
So interesting you bring up the start time.
Yes.
On the way, on the way up this morning, I heard legislative pass some more ideas that the high school starting, uh, time has changed from seven fifty to eight twenty-five.
Right.
It's going the other way, and we're looking to go back the other way.
Yeah.
I, I, I have, I support your seven fifty. I'm from the old school where we, you start school at seven for the ACT programs and like seven thirty-five for the rest of the school. That was in the old RHS.
Right.
Um, Paul would come in when he wanted to about ten, but the rest were there. Probably was.
He's a rocket scientist, look at him.
I know, and he's got a man to the moon. I think there are people up there that can operate smart. So anyway, just for fun, I thought that was an interesting discussion. The other, it really liked about your presentation is two thoughts. The clip over comes up very strongly in your presentation on Mr. Jensen. We all need a Mr. Jensen, and every one of our thirty-four thousand kids need a Mr. Jensen. And then second to that is my opinion on bullying is this fourteen-year-old Amanda Curse back in New Jersey that took her life after being bullied from TikTok.
Right.
You know, it's just sick as my heart when we're trying to worry about, we've got you.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I, I, you just spoke of my language, I, I, I worry about the same things. And, and that, that's positive school climate piece, I think, is rising to the, the top. Of course, besides student learning outcomes as being one of the focus areas that I think we're headed towards. So I agree. John, those schools that are headed towards a later start are schools that are embracing that teenage brain research that says that teenagers need to sleep longer. We are responsible. We are responsible, moving school to eight o'clock was partially tied to that, but there's, we're finding that kids aren't going to bed 15, 20 minutes earlier. They're just not. So those schools that are moving to that nine, nine-thirty start are really trying to say, we are listening to that teen research that's out there on the brain, and we're telling you that we're going to move everything back. What I, what I worry about is how would that impact all the extracurricular activities and all the things that are going on after school? That would mean kids would be getting home even later and missing more school, leaving school during the day to go to those activities. So there's a, there's a balance there. I just believe that with the needs that we see right now, that more instructional time, more time with teachers, with students is what we need, and more PD for our teachers to address the issues is what we really need at this point.
Does Davis start?
No, I'm curious, 100%. The only thing I, the only thought I would suggest is I don't know how you would do it on your questionnaire, parents, because I know we struggle, a lot of single parents in our district, especially in the Roy area, and that back would be, if we have a later start kind, does that mean our kids play with electric video games later in the night?
Right.
Which is a challenge we all have, because I have paying kids. And so when you push that back, you know what I mean, it's still being when you're supposed to be, but if you push it a little further back, I, I'm just curious, but thank you.
John, we've got, we've got education to do and engagement, and I, I hope those kinds of conversations will come out. You'll notice this is where I'll end today, so we can all take a little bit of a break. But this is the timeline for, that we've kind of put in place, and any feedback you want to provide is welcome. This is a draft right now. But we, like I said, we spend a lot of time over here, you can see the timeline, we're approaching March, where we're going to move into this next phase, and we're, we've already all started this next phase, we're ahead of the game a little bit. We've really tried to make sure that we, we're looking at all the data in our district, and we're doing surveys. We're going to talk about some of the things that we'll embed in our strategic plan. But you can see across the top here, there's a timeline of next January, so 2024, that we'd like to have four to five focus areas identified after engaging these groups, and we've engaged a lot of them already, but we need more engagement with parents, we need more engagement with our students especially. We're going to hold some focus groups with different levels of students and parents in different parts of our district. And we're going to really zero in on what are the four to five focus areas that we need to focus on as a district to move forward and to progress. And you can see we're going to come up with a new set of core values for Weaver School District. I think they'll be very similar to the core values we hold now, and a vision and a mission statement around what we're all about. And then we will align, this will be Robert's job, as a, as a business administrator, we're going to better align our fiscal resources so they directly are supporting those, those identified goals and gaps in our, in our planning, okay? So you, you can see where we're headed. It feels like it's a ways away, but if we don't engage the community in this process and we just roll out a plan coming from a small segment of people, that's not going to be reflective of what the needs are district-wide for 34,000 children. And so we want to spend a significant amount of time here, really getting a feel for what the needs are that are out there across the board. Any questions about our timeline? Go ahead.
I have a question. So during those August, September things, do you perceive the board having some direct responsibilities with those other groups or?
What, what we thought we would do.
In the past, I felt like we were fairly, I don't know, not isolated, but our, our data was more just, you know, from conversations rather than actually being in the process.
Right, right.
So I, I'm just asking if that's what you'd like or if that's what you'd.
I would embrace that, Jan, and what I would think would be helpful, I know you're all very busy people, but what I'd like to do is let you know when some of these focus groups are going on and invite you to sit in on those focus groups if you're comfortable with that. And really, the purpose of a focus group is just to ask very direct questions and get feedback, right? It's, it's not to solve the problems that we face, or, but it's also to talk about all the great things that are happening in our district as well. So I would love the board members to be able to participate in those as much as you would like to. Is that, is that helpful, Jan?
So I guess what I'm, yeah, I guess what I'm saying is, you know, we get individual calls, we get anecdotes stories, but we don't get a very broad picture.
Got it.
Sometimes.
Got it, okay. Well, I think if you were able to participate in some of these focus groups, I think that that would give you a little bit more of a broad view. So we'll make sure that you're invited to those and are aware when they're happening, okay?
I have one other, are we interested in talking to students who have recently graduated?
That's a great idea.
I don't know, I have two that have recently graduated, and they're in college now, and I feel like it's a good way for them to say, like, hey, did, did school really prepare me for college? And what, I don't know, I just might.
Or if they don't go to college, what, what other skills did I learn or not learn?
Absolutely.
I don't know, I think that's a, an interesting group to tap into as well.
That's a great suggestion. We, we're going to need to gather some information via surveys as well because we want to get a lot of information and so, but we do feel it's important to do some face-to-face, and so we're going to try to find a hybrid between those two things, and that would be a great group.
Like what worked for them or what they feel like they didn't get in high school and.
It'd be interesting how to identify them in the survey for the challenging.
Yeah.
Kitchen, yeah, yeah. So you, even if you got a certain number, you'd have some type of sample size.
Yeah, I think there's plenty of kids who would be a little.
Well, I hope you can see and feel that we have a good plan. I hope, I feel really good about where we're headed. It's going to take a little time to identify those areas. I'm going to be honest, I think we already know a few of the areas that we've already started to identify, right? So they're starting to rise to the surface, and student learning and support are always going to be at the forefront of everything we do. But what goals could we set to make sure we're measuring some specific areas and so we can see how we're progressing towards those goals? That's really what the purpose of a strategic plan is, is to see where you're at and how you're doing, and if you're making improvement. So we love your involvement and input on that process all the way through. Do you have any other thoughts before I move forward?
Well, you asked, when does Davis start?
Oh, yeah, when does Davis start?
So Davis, yeah.
I got, I pulled up the schedule for just Cleveland High, they start at seven thirty.
Okay, so that early too. I was just thinking like, because I know we need to align with other districts in our area in terms of our ending time.
They start at seven thirty on, on Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, and they start at nine thirty.
So they do a, they do a late start.
They do a two hour, and they start every Wednesday.
Most every district has gone to one day a week of some sort of professional development time.
Their lead starter.
Teacher. We'd like to align that LM K through 12 for families so it's convenient, you know what it's going to be.
Yes, 100%.
And it would make sense right now for Wednesdays right now.
Yeah.
Really quickly, I'll just end with this, and then we'll take a little break before our next portion. In a future board retreat, I'm going to get with President Witten over here at some point, I'd love to know what your priorities and goals are for Weaver School District as a board. I'd love you to be reflecting upon that a little bit. I'm sure you've always had children at the center of every conversation, of every decision that's made, and that's why I, I so love working for this board. But what other specific area you'd like us to focus on? I think we need to have that discussion at some point. Really quickly, last thing, you noticed that we were hearing a lot of feedback from our folks, our teachers and our administrators around how lean we are at the top. We believe, Clyde and Dave and I, that there are some key leadership roles that we must, we must put in place. These two individuals are retiring or have retired at the end of the year, so we will be filling these two positions. I wanted to make you aware of that. These two positions will be open and we'll be interviewing for.
This is the one that Jennifer is currently.
Currently the interim director, yes. Jennifer Boyer is filling in for Lynn Raymond's retirement, and then Carla Porter, after 31 years, is finally, is saying, I'm going to step away and get for her. So we'll be looking for a director of student services. But here are three needs that I wanted just to quickly talk to you all about, and this is where we'll end today. I'll kind of go from bottom to top, if that's okay. You heard a lot of us, a lot of data around how much our new teachers are struggling right now, how much need for support that they have. We are moving payroll and all of the employee insurance and benefits piece from Robert's office over to HR. This is huge. This is all of our employees' payroll, where they, you know, get their insurance and their mortgages paid each month. And the reason for that is Lori Adams has long been over the contracts for employees, and this will be a way that we can align everything a little bit more effectively. By moving this over to, to human resources, we really don't have the, the support we need in place for all of our new teachers. And I want you to look at all the supports pieces that we'd like to go, go more robust on. We want to onboard them better, we want to prepare them, mentor them better, we want to align all the different mentoring programs that we have in the district around them and wrap them up support. We want to get them the skills they need earlier. And then this licensing and endorsement piece is huge right now. We're, we're hiring anybody that has a degree, and many of them are coming to us with no pedagogy background, and we're having to train them. And so we're, board, I'm proposing that we add an assistant director of human resources. I've spoken to President Witten about this. This, this is something that by realigning some things and moving some things around that we, we can absorb the cost in and not have any extra costs to add in. I just want you to know the funding source would be solid on this, it would not be an issue, okay? Larry Hadley, as you know, is on the precipice of having four new builds going on all at the same time, and he is scrambling, he's doing a fantastic job. He's going to be speaking to us here in just a minute about one of those builds and updating you on a couple of things. But in order to give the amount of time he needs to this historical tie where we're building four schools all at once, we're proposing that we add a supervisor for him at least temporarily for three to four, maybe three years. This position would be absorbed later on, but for the time being, we feel like we need to provide the support. And we're focusing so much on school safety right now, that's a whole nother arm that we need somebody to be kind of managing while he's, he's managing these four courses because we really are enhancing our schools around safety right now.
What would happen to that person after three or four years?
So what we envision, Kelly, that's a great question, is that we, we move them into maybe either that particular role at that point if that became open and/or with some retirements and attrition that we might be predicting might happen around that time, or in another leadership role in the district.
Yeah, so would it be someone coming in going, my job's only four years?
No, it would not be, it would be temporary in that it would be around addressing these needs right now.
This thought just entered my brain, but on the school safety enhancements, that right now, it's really huge. We've been, we, we had tuition taxation last year, where we appropriated money for that, and that the state is poised and ready to dump a lot of school safety things on us. And Lane, who has a full-time job being our public relations guy, is now a full-time safety guy, and that now is the time to attack that. And, and we need that supervisor to say.
Yeah, I, I can't stress how much is going on in this area right now, it's a lot.
Are we going to see any of the state funding from that bill with that 25 maybe?
It's looking promising, Kelly, for what I'm hearing, absolutely. Last but not least, you just saw Sherry Hyder here. Sherry has been in the dual role, she has been the head of two departments. Warren, I need you to understand something. The load she's been carrying for 10 years, most every district in the state has a curriculum, a teaching and learning department, and they have an assessment department. And Sherry has been doing both of those for a long period of time. If we're going to move around student outcomes, what we'd like to do, and we've talked to Sherry about this, we would like to have Sherry take the assessment, school improvement, and research, move these two pieces into, one piece into two pieces, have her be the director of assessment. Sherry is brilliant around, well, she's brilliant around curriculum too, but she's brilliant around data. And if she could, side by side with our administrators, our teachers, more intensively, go to the school level, use this new dashboard that we're going to have around student learning with our USIS, and take these other pieces, I think we could go a lot deeper and provide a lot more support to our schools.
That would be her new role.
That would be her new role. She would still be a director, a very important role in our district. And then what we would like to do is create a new director of teaching and learning and curriculum person who would take more the instructional practices and aligning technology with our instructional practices and really working to move our PLCs along in our schools. Sherry's been trying to do both of those, and she's done a fantastic job, but it is a lot with what our needs are right now, and we'd like to streamline those two things. With some of the folks that are in the mix, I think that we can absorb this cost, depending on who gets this job, in a way that it would not cost extra money for the district. It would be somebody moving from a current position, and, and we would be able to do away with the current position. Is that okay, Jan? So two of the three positions, we feel very confident that are not going to impact the district financially, but will help us systems-wide.
The one, it could be.
Can I ask a question on that, Tina?
Yeah.
We have people that are, that are already poised to, to be able, maybe more than one, maybe more than two, I don't know, that could move into these positions without having to do a tremendous amount of training and.
Yes, yes.
Because if we're reinventing the wheel, that seems like we might be going backwards to go forward, that'd get bad.
Jan, you ask such great questions. Yes, the answer is yes, yes, yes. We have such great people in the pipeline. I, we, there's a couple of front runners, and I don't want to speak to those folks right now because then we want to make sure we open it up to all of our candidates, but we have some folks that have very good expertise in that particular area that are poised and ready to go.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Tina?
Yes, sir.
Just to piggyback Jan's question, because mine was the same, if we have people in place in a, in a facility, normally our, we, the practice in the past has been wait till somebody tells you're going to retire.
Right.
Obviously, you've got two of them already in place.
Right.
Is the process going to pick up quicker so that you can do the domino effect again with back feeding them based off of who you fill these other positions if you get the blessing from us to go ahead?
Yes, yes, that's so, I appreciate you asking that, John. We'd like to interview right at the first week of March, and that would be our first process is to get those folks in place, but we would not be able to announce the whole shooting match until April with any of our administrative changes. I, I really see a couple of these positions being a low impact to our schools. I think we've got folks in some leadership positions that we would just maybe be moving around, and, and we would have a lower impact at the school level, but we, we've got to open it up and make sure we, we look at every candidate. So that would be the goal, John, is to make sure we have the least amount of disruption in our schools, but have that domino effect taken care of in the bigger scope and the bigger planning, okay, before April.
Can I have a thought?
Yep.
Jan, you asked a little while ago, you know, in terms of looking at other schools that have been successful with some of their interventions and things like that, and a split like this would also give a more focused, intentional delivery on some of those intervention and curriculum items. Instead of having the one job shared by, or the two jobs shared by one person, you would have a much more focused energy on, on those deliveries as well. So we were, we looked at that as part of what would also be an add to the intensity of, of working with some of those groupings that need some attention in terms of elevation and performance.
The dash of groups that we've shown you, you know, when you have 30, go ahead, Jan.
I like that too, that you've left them, you know, like in a learning and curriculum and the school improvement, the assessment, that you've left them both at, at directors because that speaks to collaboration, it doesn't speak to one being supervisory over the other.
Right, right, absolutely. Which really would solve the problem of us needing to be a little bit more nimble, right? And that, that's really what this is about, trying to provide more intensive support to the school-level teams to move their, their, their school improvement plans forward and their kids forward. So with, with your blessing, board, I would, I would, I would, we'd love to move this direction. And I know that this is more of a study session, I'd just like you to think on that a little bit, and, and I'll, I'll be speaking with you all on that, okay? Does that sound okay?
So can we, do we need to? So can we, do we need to do that in a regular board session?
No, no.
Can we do it as individual conversations?
It wouldn't be anything we would need to do formally like that in terms of opening up these positions. But we would, of course, want you to approve those that we do put in those positions and give your blessing as a board, okay? Any questions about that? Are you okay with that?
Everything comes back to funding.
Aha, it does, it always does, and we're going to be talking a little bit about that bit. I want to throw this out to you. Great Board, I know I've sent you a lot of updates about things that are going on in our district, and I know it's felt like it's a lot, but I really believe this adage that things get, we've got to move through some growing pains. We're growing, our district is growing. We are, we are growing in ways that, you know, will take us through the next 10 years. And we just, as a superintendent, we want to make sure that we do our due diligence and put the right pieces of people in place that can sustain that growth moving forward. And so we're willing to do the hard things, because we believe that we are going to level up, we're going to take it to the next level in our district. We believe that, or we wouldn't be sitting here with you today. And we appreciate your support so much. I hope you know and fulfill our hearts, that our hearts are about kids, they're about the people we serve. I can't think of a better job. We're just honored to be in this role, and we appreciate your support, so.
Before we have a break, I just need to say how excited I am about the work you've done.
Thank you.
And how touched I am by your work.
I appreciate that.
Thank you for sharing that.
I appreciate it.
Now, every time I see that, my heart will go out to it, and I'll be supportive of it, because I think that that's critical, that each child, if we can get so that they know that they are seen and that they are important.
Absolutely.
I just think that that is, and I'm excited that this is available to the public. I'd love, I ask, try and get us a picture around this table while we're here, maybe even before the break.
Sure, absolutely.
Because I'm so excited about all your work.
Thank you, Jan, I appreciate that.
Really want to support it.
We do. I can guarantee you, we spend 12 hours a day at least.
Twenty, twenty-four.
Sometimes more. Talking about these very things, knowing that it's our responsibility to make things better and to celebrate all the great things our people are doing. Can I just end with this? Public ed is the great battleground right now, but can I tell you this? Public ed, I believe in it with all my heart. It is the vehicle that will allow every child that we have come into our district to have a chance to be who they want to be. And I know that we're not perfect. I know we have lots of things that we need to work on and do better. But the things that are happening around support that we're providing children, I see heroic things every single day. I wish I could send you a message and a profile of everything that we see going on every single day in our schools around this. It doesn't always equate to an outcome or a percentage. It equates to, I really believe that students in our district are in the right place. We need to make sure that parents understand that and that we can articulate why they're in the right place. That's our goal going forward. We've got to do better in public education and telling our story, because we are difference makers. We make a difference. And that takes a board that is supportive of what we're trying to do, and we feel that from you, and so thank you. Do we need a little break?
Let's take a little break, how long, till 10 o'clock?
About 10, start at 10 or 10?
It is five or six minutes long enough.
Yeah.
Let the spreader link.
And just one quick question. I hear the term best practices.
Yes.
Is that a schedule somewhere? Is that absolute, or is that different here versus tentacle canyon?
Yeah, you know.
What is, is best practices an absolute thing?
You know, Doug.
Means different things?
We can show you around instruction, research-based best practices that we'd like to bring in more heavily to our district. And I'd love to walk you through those systems that are considered to be best practices. The PLC system, for example, is a best.
That's an issue in our world we're facing, isn't it?
Yep, it sure is.
We talk about cosmetic versus.
I try and, like, that, right? That's good, that's good.
That's great. All right, well, if President Widdison's okay with this, are you okay with my introduction to this next piece? Are you okay with that?
Please, yes, go ahead.
We've asked, you'll notice we have some great leaders with us today. We want to welcome Larry Hadley, our Facilities Director, Executive Director. And Mary Jo Williams is over here, and Heather Nelson, these are our great elementary leaders. They've joined us today, and I want to welcome Matt and Taylor. Thanks so much for your patience, Matt, for waiting for us to get to this point. And then Seth Kelkey is right over here behind us, Assistant Director in our Business Office. What we'd like to do, and this is just more informational, just to get the board around some challenges we're facing with the Roosevelt Elementary Build. As you know, that was the fourth project on the bond that was passed in 2021, November of 2021. And Larry and Robert and I have been working diligently around some different plans and ideas, but we want to give you a lay of the land to start. And then some of the folks that have been invited to the meeting will take some bit parts and be able to answer any questions that you might have, okay? So I'm going to turn the time to Robert. Robert's going to give us an overview here. Thanks, Robert.
You have these documents with you. This is the big landscape, what you have, our legal size. But it would be helpful if you looked up here, because if you're looking down at your sheet, you can take notes on your sheet, if you're looking down at your sheet, you might miss some. I put together this, I'm a visual person, that's why I like spreadsheets, I like to see the whole picture.
You like spreadsheets because you're a nerd.
But you're in good company. But so I divided this in columns that coincide with quarters. So this is fiscal year '22, and we had our election in November, right there, of '21. The '21-'22 years of fiscal year, we had our election there, and immediately after our election, we issued bonds and started building. We built, we had the groundbreaking in February '22, and we had the groundbreaking in March '22 for Mountain View. So Westville, Mountain View started very close together. And their building schedules coincide, and it goes through this whole year, and it goes through this whole year, and it opens up in this quarter, fiscal year '25. So August of '24, it opens, okay? Then Mountain View also has a similar time schedule. Now, it's interesting, we had our truth and taxation hearing in August, right there. It was the first time we'd had truth and taxation in five years. And so that's a, it was a big gap between truth and taxations. Even the, even the most conservative of people in the legislature say you ought to have those every three years just to keep up with inflation. And we, our gap had gone wider than we'd like for various reasons. Then, new elementary, groundbreaking, January '23, right there in the middle of the fiscal year '23. And that was last month, and we started, right, Larry?
Sure.
And it's set to open in August '24. So you see, we've got three schools opening at the same time, and being built simultaneously. The Roosevelt Rebuild. Now, we, we go like this, we have really stewed over this because it is a challenge to fund this school, and I'll show you another sheet in a minute. But it was scheduled, when we first did it, it was scheduled to open up another year in the fiscal year '27, in August of '26. We are proposing that we open it in August of '25, so a year earlier. So it would have been on the chart over here, does that make sense? And do you want Larry to explain why?
Yes, Larry.
Is that okay?
Yeah, now's a good time.
Okay. When we looked at it, we looked at it, in fact, the Weber School District website says, I think, June of '26 to open. But if you look at the start date, it's January of '24, because a phased build is 30 months, to build it in phases. So we brought in MHTN and Hogan and looked at a couple of different options. Because of the economy we're in now, and the bidding process, and all the subs, a 30-month bid that would go out until '26 could hit another inflationary cycle or an inflationary jump. As you can see, and Robert's going to go through this later, the cost of the elementary, the new elementary is about $42.7, $42,700,000. And if we go out 30 months, we could be looking at a big increase. So we looked at options to say, how maybe do we, to get materials and things earlier? So we looked at maybe still opening in January '24, but that would do two things. If you do a clean parcel build, meaning you just got the piece of ground and you want to build on it, you can do it 15 months. So we looked at a phased build, a clean parcel build, and we ended up with kind of a mix of the two, which I'll get into a little later.
Sorry, are we rebuilding on the same?
Lot.
Yes.
So it's, we're building while kids are in school?
That's it. So a 30-month disruption?
It's a long time.
Yeah, that's what we thought. So we took into consideration not only the materials and cost, but the disruption of the school and the actual build of it. If you build it in phases, you have to build it a little differently, which I'll get into a little later. But this is where we set up, hey, Robert, and Gina and I sit down and sort of look, and Robert came up with this idea, which I think is brilliant.
Yeah, the other thing too, Robert, yeah. Remember, so Larry just told us 45, correct, for the elementary, 45 million?
Forty-two, seven.
Forty-two, okay.
Yep.
When we've done Orchard Springs and Silver Ridge, it seemed like to me we were in like the '21-'22.
So things have more than doubled in just that short period of time.
You'll see that.
Yes.
So that's why our bond's off a little bit. You're going to see that. Is we just can't keep up with inflation. Yeah, all right. And see, the, on the 30, on a 30-month bill, the, those subs and those contractors, they bid it here in October, because we're going to go to bid in October on this building right here. They bid in October, and they have that much more time. They, they'll build inflation, because they don't want to.
They're patting it, because they.
They don't want to be caught short, because they have to make, meet their expenses too, you know? And so the shorter, the shorter, the earlier we get the build going, and the shorter we can do it, the bigger savings.
Yes, and I, Robert's exactly right. If you think of the bid process itself, construction, electrical, two of the bigger ones. I've got to bid it, but I've got to bid it, then I've got to come in in these three months, come out in three months, come back in three months, come out. So they're going to already pad labor and inflation. So the bid's going to look different over a 30-month bid versus a 12- to 18-month bid.
Yeah, so it makes sense. Okay, so then, the expense schedule, and we'll get to the cost over here. The, here are the costs of the various schools. This row goes along here, Westville High, the total cost is going to be $172, built over 12 quarters. Mountain View, 6 to 6, over 12 quarters, 46 for the new, 52 for the Roosevelt rebuild, over eight quarters. And these are an average cost per quarter. If I just did that solidly, it'll, that could vary. But you can see the costs of Westville are right here. And we always poke over into the next quarter as we build, something because we're paying off what was done. And then the Mountain View costs are spread over this time, and the new elementary are spread over this time. And then the Roosevelt rebuild is spread over this time, and it goes off, goes right to there, okay? And so our financing, we issued bonds last, was it February or March?
Yeah, it closed in February.
Closed in February. And so if we took that bond and divided it equally until the next bond comes, which is right there, it's about $19 million drawn out. But that, this is just for those purposes, because then the next bond comes, the second bond there, which we are going to go to the market.
A week from tomorrow.
A week from tomorrow, and that's for $110 million. And so that $110 million, if spread equally to meet these costs, we would go into bond next, maybe next year for $79 million. And then we're going to have what's called a revenue bond to load in to build, rebuild Roosevelt.
The rates are going up as well, aren't they?
Rates have, they came down significantly in January, which was nice. They're playing this game right now.
Yeah.
With, you know, no white swings, which is good, so leveled off a bit. But they are definitely up from where we were last year, about 100%.
Yeah, so this is just kind of a timeframe, and I wanted to talk to you next about the costs, why this revenue bond is needed. And so we'll go to another spreadsheet, and it looks like. Yep, that one right there, okay? Okay.
This is best practices, spreadsheet.
Doug, you are absolutely right. I've never seen him so mean, this is like a giddy.
Now, we, in November of '21, we passed a bond for $279 million. The largest bond that we were, the school district was ever had. And just so you know, we, for these four projects, a new high school, a new junior high, a new elementary, and a Roosevelt replace. And just so you know, for over a year building up to that, we had probably the most experienced architect on board helping us, MHTN, a very experienced construction outfit, Hogan Construction, that has built lots of schools. Because we did not want to get caught short, caught short. And we, we built in every inflationary cost, we were very careful. We worked closely with Stiefel and Matt and Preston, if you remember Preston. And we, we came up with a figure that all the inflationary costs and everything like that are $252 million. And we were patting ourselves on the back saying, yes. And then, and then inflation was starting to occur, and we, we saw that because the assessed value in our county went up a certain point, we could afford more without a rate change. And so we went in and put more on these inflationary and came up to $279 million. And we once again, patting ourselves on the back, saying, phew, yes, we did that. We're, we're going to be able to cover our costs, we met every inflationary contingency, you know? Little did we know that, that we, that things would go so out of whack. So the architect cost at Westville High, I'll just use this as an example, and you can kind of look through them. The construction bid was this, testing and fees is sitting at about $200,000. Site improvements, FFNE, that is furniture, fixtures, and equipment. That's what you have to do after the building is built. And this building is very similar to Farmington High School. And Farmington had a, had a $8, $8.5 million FFNE. And so with inflationary cost, we bumped that to 12, okay? And so instead of being $157 million, we're at $172,000. That's 15.5 underwater. Okay, Mountain View was $51 million, the bid came in at $62 million. And then I've got to go back to get that, that architect fee is there. On the architect fee, we actually got a little bit of a break on the architectural fee, because Mountain View is basically a rebuild of a boy. And so they did charge it a full 5.5% of the, is it 5 and a half?
Five and a quarter.
Four, five and a quarter. Okay, then testing and fees, FFNE, once again, this is an estimate, Roy was at $1.5 million. And so we put that at $2 million. We also feel like we can do it more efficiently, put it in Roy for one, and then we put in inflationary cost, because we got our purchasing procedures a little more fine-tuned. And so 66.8 million is the total cost, we're almost 15.9 underwater. The new elementary, oh, these lines right here are the cost as of 2011. So I have to, so to date, we spent $48 million. To date, we spent $30.5 million, okay? The new elementary, we thought was going to come in at $34, the architect fees are $2 million. The actual bid came in at $42.7 million, testing and fees. FFNE, what we did is I took an average of Orchard Springs and Silver Ridge, which was $1. which is one point three million, and then, um, this is a smaller school of those two, and then, uh, then we add inflation to it. And so these are kind of estimates, this whole F F and E are estimates. Um, so forty-six point three nine, twelve point three underwater. The Roosevelt replace is thirty-seven million, we thought, the architect fee. The, um, we did a thirteen percent increase over this elementary. So basically that figure, if you can see the formula up there, it's, um, it's this figure times by thirteen percent. And so we put an inflationary cost up there. Uh, sixty thousand for testing and fees, four hundred thousand for a demolition. And, um, once again, that's an estimate. Um, uh, it's interesting on demolition, this little sidebar, at certain times of the year, it's better to demolish than at other times of the year. It's like double the cost if you do it at certain times of the year than you do it, than if you do it in, uh, at other times. Um, we don't, we don't have any Larry asbestos, old oil tanks.
We've already done the site, uh, we haven't done that site, but we've done the duplex that's on there. We've done that asbestos, and so that part is getting demolished, so, yeah.
But with us, elementary school?
We're, we're running the sites, uh, surveys right now. Yep, we are, and just gonna do those.
Oh.
The squatters have left.
We didn't get the squatters out. That's a capital improvement, maybe, that's a, that was a story.
They've been at the district office a couple of times, yeah.
So we're fourteen point seven underwater there. And so the total, when you add this total in, we're fifty-eight point four nine lower than what our cost was. And so, that's scary, okay? Um, now, what about the revenue side? On the revenue side, our first bond issue was ninety million, less issuance cost, 'cause of cost to, to issue a bond, and then we get a premium. Uh, because the bidders out there, and correct me if I'm wrong, Matt, but the bidders out there, when they bid, they add a, they add a bond premium to capture our bid, and, um, I, it has some interest rates. I still don't quite understand how to create, 'cause premiums haven't always existed. I've been in this business since nineteen ninety-eight, and I've done several, uh, many bond issues, and premiums in my lifespan are relatively new, and they might go away. They're really market-driven, aren't they?
Market situation.
Yeah.
Essentially, yeah.
And so, we got a six point, uh, almost, uh, six million premium, which helps. But, don't say yay too fast, because see that two hundred seventy-nine million thing out there? The legislature passed a law that caps our premium at two percent. Um, so the cap is at five point five million. But we captured six point five, and so that means we'll have to cough up premium back with subsequent bond issues, 'cause that's all that we can gather. And that, uh, was, uh, basically the state treasurer and a key senator named Howard Stevenson.
Howard Steed did that.
Yeah.
We're the only state in the country that has.
We're, the only state in the country has that, we just don't believe in the market here, you know? Um, anyway, enough of my editorializing. Uh, the, uh, by the second issue, next, we'll have, we'll go out to bid next week, is what we said. And the timeframe, and then the close is in March.
Yes, yeah.
And we're to go up a hundred and ten million. I just put similar issuance costs, and then I put the premium that we'd have to come back. Those two premium things add up, that's a negative right there, add up to this right here. The third issue will go out next year at this time, seventy-nine million, bond issuance cost. Then also, 'cause we hired our architect for the high school early, and so we came up with two million dollars to pay for, bought some of that architecture fee you see up there. So our total revenue is, is, um, oops, I did something, I grabbed something. Uh, is two hundred eighty-five million. So, the, we're underwater fifty-eight point four nine, but because of this premium and that two million, our underwaterness is about fifty-one point eight million, okay? Um, now, um, we, I'm estimating fifty-three million to be fine, just for illustration purposes. The closer we get to, um, our assessed value in June, this, uh, is, 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 um, we'll, these figures will come in better clarity. Um, the rule of thumb, and this is just a big rule of thumb, that's why I put it in air quotes, that Matt has given us, is eighty thousand dollars in annual payment for one million financed. And so, our annual payment would be four point two million, that's fifty-three million times eighty thousand, if you can see the formula of order. And that would stretch out over a, a twenty-one, twenty-two year period, or something like that?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. And, uh, and just like a bond, okay? So then, if the bond is paying for, um, the, the, basically the bond is paying for these three projects, and this, we're gonna have to issue what's called a revenue bond to pay for this. Now, the revenue bond will take forward approval, and we'll show you kind of how that works. Um, because you do have options, um, there are districts that do revenue bonds all the time when they fall short. And that's gotten very common, especially during this hiatus, inflationary fund. You've got the Alpines, the Davises, the Washingtons, the Nevels, the Wossaches, they twill it. They've, they've run revenue bonds, 'cause they're in the same boat. We were, they, they, they thought they had gathered all the experts and estimated the cost, but the inflationary costs have just outstripped things. And so, they have passed revenue bonds, just like a city. When a city puts in a huge sewer system, it's a revenue bond, and they pay for that revenue bond off the sewer fees.
Do we have to go to voters for that, like these other bonds?
No, no truth and taxation. No, truth and taxation. And we have to then, in order to issue a revenue bond, we have to organize ourselves, it's a legal organization. We have to, a municipal building authority. And, um, Matt would help us with that, along with Ryan Bjergi, our bond counsel. I'm putting together a municipal building authority, and you would have the authority as a board to issue revenue bonds. Um, and that would, and we would raise a capital levy to pay the revenue bonds. The other option is not to build the school, 'cause we've not pulled the trigger, we've not gone to, we've not gone to bid. And the, um.
Doug and I have had that discussion.
We talked about the U-Haul truck.
We did, sir.
If we don't build the school, it'll be a U-Haul at my house.
It'll be relocated.
The thing about it is, is, um, I can tell you a little World War II story, it was a World War II day, but, um, this board has a tradition of keeping its promises, and they are always keeping their promises. And we promised in that election to replace Roosevelt, and with that tax rate increase, and we can still keep that promise, and we'll show you how, okay? Um, so, uh.
May I ask you something?
Yeah.
Um, you said, is the structure such that we can issue reg, revenue bonds right now? Or we have to take that structure so that we can do that down, down the road?
That's a great question. We have to form a municipal building authority, which is a legal thing, and then we have to, then we have to, in a truth and taxation, we have to issue rev, we have to issue revenue bonds.
An ability to issue revenue bonds?
The municipal building authority gives us the authority, the legal authority to issue revenue bonds. And then, then we issue revenue bonds and we pay for that out of a capital levy. And we'll show, we'll show you the ramifications of that. Now, this is a lot to absorb.
What's the timeframe on that, if we're, if, if, I mean, is that something we can have done summertime?
So let's, let's go back to our time schedule thingy, which I like. So, so this revenue bond, which I put down here, um, we have a, we can only do truth and taxations in August. And so we had one here, which is the first of five years that we have had one. And we've also had, we, we are proposing to have one here, which will be when we raise the revenue for the, um, the, the capital levy, to pay for this revenue bond. Uh, as you can see, the overlapping funding streams, um, we, we can, we can issue a revenue bond clear up in here. We can start putting in here, and Matt, correct me if I'm wrong, we can issue the bonds, and the payments could be later, the payments could be in, in the June, or I mean, in the first of this year, right? You know what I mean?
Yes.
But, uh, but the, uh, the tricky thing is, I don't wanna have a groundbreaking on a school until the funding mechanism is in place. I don't wanna pay for that to back, so the next chance for a truth and taxation's here. But if we had a truth and taxation that August, uh, we've already started the school, you know? We, we, um, we started the school, the groundbreaking's right here, and we're gonna go, oh, we're gonna pay for this after the fact? That's a pretty expensive credit card. Um, I don't like, I don't like doing that. I don't, I, I want to have the funding mechanism in place at this proposed truth and taxation, so that we can confidently go to bid on that building on October, and start the groundbreaking on January, and open it up in August of twenty fifth. 'Cause this is the cheapest, least expensive mech, uh, timeframe, as Larry and the, his crew, working with him, architects and Hogan have come up with, what you say, Larry?
That's how I should be, yes, sir.
Okay. So, um, any other questions?
I quickly.
Until we move to the next thing.
None of this is voted, though, it's the board that would make the decisions.
It's the board, obviously.
Yeah.
Yeah, the board would make the decisions. But you have to go to a truth and taxation hearing, and we all know those aren't fun, but they're.
What are we gonna do previous to truth and taxation to educate our community and parents? And, like I said, I felt like your last presentation on truth and taxation to me was helpful, but it was only helpful for people who were watching at the time.
Who were there.
But, you know, I think we could've gotten more people in support of the tax increases if they had known about it. I don't know, if there was just an, an education piece in the district. I mean, I'm sure the Roosevelt people will come out in support of it, but for every, for all the other people who don't like truth and taxation.
It, I, I don't know, it's, we've had about seven or eight taxations that I've been here, and they've all been, um.
Fine.
They've all been smallish. Last year's was a, was a bigger than normal for us, not bigger than normal for most, for most districts. But for us, it was a big one, and, and.
But I guess I'm just saying to like prepare ourselves if this happens.
I don't know, I, it's hard, I don't know how to prepare for it.
So I'm just saying, I don't know how to like.
Well, you know, I think Kelly's, to Kelly's point, I think we can do a far better job utilizing our, uh, utilizing Lane, putting some messaging on our website, uh, helping our administrators have talking points, you know, especially in the, the model code.
Utilizing the PTA.
Yep, yep, absolutely. So there's some narratives that we can put together.
That's just my suggestion.
Just some fan talking points.
Just politics.
Let, let, let me take thirty seconds and, and just throw something in here while we're kind of on the topic. Uh, you guys all know Brent Strait, uh, I have, uh, let me just.
Don't you wanna do that?
I, I talked with him, uh, in January, you know, where he's on the, the South Ogden City Council and also involved with the state school board. He said that they have a truth and taxation every year. And he says, what that does is it kind of makes it a commonality, a common thing, and they don't always, they don't always change the taxes, but they always have a truth and taxation. And sometimes that will come up and say, they'll just say, there's no need for a change.
But they, but it's scheduled.
But it's scheduled.
That's a great idea.
And he says, that's kind of taken a little bit of the heat off of them, because it's something that happens every year, not something that builds up for five years and everybody attacks them.
I think it's just another key answer.
I begged for Rose City to do that.
Yeah, what's that, Jen?
I begged for Rose City to do a, a more frequent truth and taxation.
So I'm, I'm just throwing out that, that, that's something that we might wanna talk about and consider. He seems to think it would work good for us. We don't have to do it, we may wanna just look at it and see.
Can I just ask one more question? The only thing that would be addressed in this truth and taxation that we are possibly proposing would be the Roosevelt rebuild?
No, uh, we're, that's where I'm getting my next part of my.
Hold on, Jen.
Okay, so.
Great question, great question.
Ooh, that's a great segue.
Yes.
Okay, there's a tab here called funding options, and you've got a sheet that talks about funding options that we have a handout. Uh, just to review, um, we have truth and taxation out of August twenty-two. The money starts flowing in twenty-two, two, twenty-three. Our assessed value went up to twenty point nine billion, twenty billion nine hundred two million. Um, uh, that's, that's the value of every piece of property in Weaver School District now, okay? Uh, so it's all Weaver County minus Ogden's. And that was a thirty-one point seven percent increase. Um, it's the biggest increase we've ever had by a lot. Um, uh, the last time we had an increase above twenty percent, the only time we had the increase above twenty percent, 'cause I got a big historical chart, was back in two thousand and seven, before the big recession.
Recession, two thousand and eight.
Yeah. And so, that raised, uh, this, this was a big, a big raise. And the purpose of this truth and taxation, we raised nine point six million, and we increased the voted levy. The voted levy is a levy that, that provides funding for, um, the school district, and it's, it, the, the rate is established by the voters. And, um, so we have a, we have a voted amount established by the voters, it's like an eleven something. Um, but, uh, over time, that, that gets lower than the voted authorization. As assessed values go up, the rate comes down. And so we have an authorized amount that we could go to, um, that were much lower than that.
We hadn't done it for years.
No, and then, so, so we, the average taxable home value is five hundred and twenty-six thousand. And, um, I, we put taxable, because that's not the market value. Um, but that, when you get your, when you get your tax notice, you'll notice that the, um, that it's, it's a lot less than what you could sell it for. But that's the, that was the average that was used, so this is how the advertisement looked. We had an annual increase of a hundred and thirty-three dollars on a home that value, and a monthly increase of eleven oh nine. The thing about it is, is this is the average, and you will have people that their, their values went up way faster than the average, and so they're the ones that get upset, because they'll go, you know, you're, it's more than a hundred and thirty-three bucks, my taxes went up X, you know? And, uh, but, we used it for salaries, because as we proved that our salaries were way behind other districts, and, and it, it takes an effort to, um, stay, stay competitive. And then also capital needs, because of the big inflation we've had, we've had capital safety needs, we raised our two and a half million for that. So the total raise was nine point six million, this was last year, okay? Now, during the, during the bond election, we said that we were going to have to, um, provide for the operational costs of the new school, or else we can't open it. You cannot build a school and not pay for the operational costs. And we've always had a bond, a board levy, this is the board levy, this is the rate that the board can set by a vote of the board to operate the schools. And working with our great elementary folks and our great secondary folks, we've kind of made a list of what it takes to open a new school. So, you'll, in new, our new elementary out there will need a principal, a head secretary, an office aide, a head custodian, assistant custodian, part-time custodians, an elementary counselor, a teaching aide, a lunchroom aide, a playground duty free aide, a morning supervision, a PDA, media aide, and utilities. Um, and these all add up to, and I, I've got their, their, their step and lane, that they get paid, social security retirement and health insurance, and, um, and that all adds up to a hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars.
Just a quick reminder that the teacher portion of this, the teacher, they're paid for by the enrollment that's generated by each school, so that, that's why they're not included.
The teachers will follow the enrollment. So when this is built up, and we have boundary changes, which we have the boundary teams experts in the room over there in the corner, the, uh, the teachers follow the enrollment, that's why you don't see teachers there.
In our last session, the elementary people weren't an assistant principal, and other.
Didn't include more.
Interns wanted more.
Yeah, they do. And we've not included that, we just included what our current elementary, this is what our current elementary has.
Can I speak to that, though? We just dug down such an important point. With the boundary, extensive boundary study that we're in the midst of right now, and with all the moving parts, we kind of feel like, and I love your input on this, we'd like to see how the dust settles. Once we get the boundaries established for each of our schools, and we create that new Westfield code, we really need to kind of see what, what are our numbers, what do they look like before we start planning for the future in terms of maybe adding more administrative support? Because, for example, out of our new high schools, it's looking right now like, you know, they could be looking at anywhere between fourteen and sixteen hundred kids. Weaver's gonna be probably a little bit higher than that. So as we adjust the staffing in those schools, maybe the enrollment will be down a little bit to, to, to provide for some growth in those schools, and we might not have the great need that we have. So we don't wanna. So we don't want to include those particular costs, even though we'd love to in this, in this analysis because we want to kind of see how the dust settles around the boundary adjustments. Does that make sense? Yep.
Yeah, um, Westfield High School was, the name's going on me. I like it.
Well, that's good.
I know, at first I thought, that's, that's kind of boring, but no, I, I, I'm liking it. Yeah, okay, I'm, uh, I'm, uh.
Robert, go comb the Terry office.
I was a hater on Orion too, just to say when they, when they first came with Orion, I thought that was dumb. Now I think, now I think Orion's really cool. Okay, uh, principal, we need two assistant principals and have an intern and athletic director, a counselor, a counselor. Um, uh, our counselors will shuffle around, they follow the student too, but because of the current load of certain schools, we're gonna need two new counselors. A head secretary, a registrar. You can see it takes a lot to run a high school and attendance secretary, bookkeeper, counseling secretary and assistant secretary and SRO. And that is today's current cost on SROs. With new legislation passed, it's gonna be higher than that.
It's double.
Um, uh, head custodian, assistant head custodian, general custodian, general custodian, general custodian, part-time custodian, office aide, media specialist, media aide, copy aide and utilities. This utilities is what Fremont costs plus eight percent inflation. That's three hundred and fifty one thousand, okay? So to operate the new high school, which we've not built in thirty years, we have not had a new high school. We're the, we are the district on the Wasatch front that has gone the longest without a new high school. Um, uh, even Murray, one high school district has rebuilt Murray High, you know, um, uh, and so, and so, um, uh, we're.
It's time.
It is time, is what I'm saying. And we've not done this. We have not gone through this, this exercise before. So that's two point five million, okay?
The record is probably Tintic High School though.
Well, I've been to, I've been to, Tintics had a rebuild.
Can we legitimately say that our growth is higher than most on the Wasatch front?
Especially on the west side.
If you look at our west growth.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, Mountain View Junior High, um, we have a principal, an assistant principal, a head secretary, a tennis secretary, registrar, counseling, office aide, SRO. Once again, the SRO is probably low, but we'll fine tune this as we get in the, in the summer too, after the slush century. Media specialist, head custodian, assistant custodian, part-time custodians, utilities. This utility is based upon Roy with an eight percent inflation increase because this is a, this is a, gonna be the same, uh, four point two Roy, okay? So then we are adding tons of square, how many square feet are we adding here?
Seven hundred thousand.
Seven hundred thousand square feet. And you just can't add seven hundred thousand square feet without other costs that our district adds. Um, nurses, but we share nurses between schools and we have to have more nurse time. So we got two nurses. Mental health specialists, two new mental health specialists, school techs, these are youth support. We share them between schools and bring two new ones. Maintenance, to add seven hundred thousand, we, we really need close to ten maintenance individuals. But we are, um, uh, we are putting half of that need right then and we will, we will have a plan to circle back over a period of two or three years with others as we, as we grow, okay? Mechanic, our white fleet's gonna grow. Our white fleet is the non-school bus fleet. And, and it's, we also have a need of mechanic, even with our school buses, there's this need for a mechanic. And so these district adds are one million three hundred forty six thousand. The total, the total adds, the grand total is six million, okay, to operate the schools. And so that six million is plunked right there. That's six million twenty nine. And you can see, last year was a nine point six million increase and we got six million twenty nine. The additional rate that we would be required to, and then what I did is I took the assessed value, remember that twenty billion? And I increased it by three billion. I'm assuming a twelve percent increase. And, and I think that's a conservative assumption. I think we're gonna go higher than twelve percent and we'll know that figure in June, okay? And that assessed value, it would cost, um, uh, um, uh, we would generate new revenue of six million. The current revenue generated is fifteen point eight and that would give us total board levy revenue of, of twenty one point eight billion.
So the fifteen point eight was from the truth and taxation part of it?
No, that's just what it, that's what the current rate is.
Oh, just by the, Jen.
There's, there's the current rate, there's the rate right there. We add, we add two point five eight to the rate, making a total new board rate of nine three three. And this is also just with every, the rates change, they'll give us new rates in June. And so this is all based upon what's current right now. Uh, but this is just for illustration purposes with this assumption of a twelve percent increase, okay? Now, that capital levy that we talked about to raise the revenue bond, that familiar four point two million to, this will be, uh, what's needed to finance a twenty-two year loan with, um, uh, with a revenue bond to build, uh, replace Roosevelt.
So Doug doesn't have to move.
So they have to move. The additional rate there is, 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 uh, one eight one.
That's your line, Doug. That's your line.
This is the, the original rate, additional rate is one eight one, which will raise, uh, four million two hundred thirty seven thousand, considering that assessed value up here. Uh, but the current capital rate is seven thirty seven and the new capital rate will be nine eighteen. So we'll raise four point two million in new to add to the current seventeen point two million and that will be twenty nine, almost twenty nine and a half million, twenty one and a half million, you know? Um, so here's, I put this here because we're gonna give you option two also. Here's option one. Option two, or option one would include no service in the debt service levy, no change. You remember the debt service levy is, that's what we pay our bond. The purpose of that is to pay existing bonds that we have out there. And we have a whole series of bonds that have been passed over the last two decades that stretch out over time. Every year we pay some off, but we get new ones are added and that kind of thing. The current rate is, uh, thirteen forty three. Uh, this, the whole scenario is that we don't change that. Now these two rates right here have to be, when you change those, they're subject to truth and taxation. If you increase those, they're subject to truth and taxation. This one right here is not subject to truth and taxation. This is set where the board needs to have it set to pay for the debt, to pay for the debt. So if we maintain the rate, no new money is raised and we stick with the thirty one million four thirty nine total, okay? So under this scenario, the advertisement would read new revenue because it's these two add together, the six million and the four million. The new revenue would be ten million two hundred sixty nine thousand. The rate increase would be four thirty nine. I raised the taxable value of a home by twelve percent just for, just for comparison purposes. So the annual increase would be a hundred and forty two dollars and it, eleven dollars eighty five cents. So this is a bigger tax increase than, than, uh.
Last year's.
Okay, um, uh, now, before you go gold, well, you shouldn't go gold, um, uh, I don't know if our board member. Um, uh, cause these are weighty things. Here are the pros. Um, we keep our promise to replace Roosevelt in this bond cycle. Only two tax increases here in a row because we could, um, uh, what is, where is my timeline? Oh, I was already on that sheet, okay. Here's the timeline. We could have a truth and taxation both here and here and kind of split that. Um, uh, but there's pros to going just one right here. One of the pros is you get it done. And that way you're not constantly slamming the taxpayers because your tax protester type, it really doesn't matter the size, they're gonna be upset. Anyway, the other thing too is this is a general election, November twenty four right there is a general election. And, um, and if some of you board members will be up for election and, um, and it could be hard to, um, uh, deal with the truth and taxation right before the board, uh, by the election, just saying, okay? Um, uh, getting back over here, so it avoids two tax hearings in a row, avoids election year tax hearing.
Robert, can I ask?
Yeah.
That, that tax, that election cycle will also be a presidential election cycle. And you get a lot more people interested in the political landscape during a president general.
Yeah, definitely, absolutely.
I'm up for election in twenty twenty four. Me too.
Yeah, but, and then also this gets the board levy to a level to maintain maximum state aid. Because one, another reason why we did just only the voted levy last time is we received several million dollars from the state of Utah if we maintain a certain level on the voting leeway. And, um, and we also retained several million, we get several million dollars from the state. They encourage us, they encourage us, they expect us to have local effort. And, um, uh, and they give you a five-year hold harmless, you know, as that rate comes down with the rising assessed value, they give you a five-year hold harmless before you have to lift it up again. And, um, uh, we are able to maintain that, that, that maximum ability to put ourselves in a position to gain the most state revenue possible, okay? Um, uh, so gets board levy to a, a level to ma, to give maximize state aid, uh, maintains current debt service levy. We'll make it easier past the next bond. With that thirteen forty three, we kept that thirteen forty three debt service levy for fifteen years. And we've had three bond elections in that time and we've been able, because, because assessed value's going up, that rate stays the same. We've been able to, to structure our debt in such a way that we build space for a new bond election and we can say to the voters, we're gonna build these buildings without a rate increase, you know? Um, uh, and then we go to bid on Roosevelt in October twenty three. This would solidify financial support. I would, I would, I would not feel comfortable leaving, going to the bid process without passing, with Roosevelt without passing that cap levy first. So I, uh, to put it on a new credit card.
Yeah.
Okay, cons, broken promises to voters that we would not raise rates to pay for construction. Because although you keep this rate the same, you're lifting that rate to pay for construction, okay? And then possible sticker shock on the total increase, okay? So that, those are the pros and cons. So that's why we have option number two. Option number two, go by quicker to explain it to you, um, uh, we have all those operational costs that we need, the six million twenty nine thousand. So there's the board levy increase and this is all similar to what was up, up above. Option number two, the current rate's this, the total proposed rate would be that, where, where, those are the, the new dollar figures. And then the capital levy is the same thing. Um, uh, but what we would do in option number two is we would lower the debt service levy. We'd lower it to the equivalent that we're raising the capital. The capital goes up by one eight one and we lower this by one eight one. And so the current rate is that and the proposed rate would be that, eleven sixty two. And so the taxpayer would only see this as an increase. They would not see that as an increase. And that's a common thing that's done, isn't it Matt?
Very much so.
The, um, uh, you lower your debt and you raise your capital. Now, we, we, uh, the actual change to the taxpayer is this, six million, which is less than the last truth taxation, that nine billion one. And then the annual increase is less than a hundred dollars. Um, uh, and, uh, the monthly increase is, is seven bucks. Uh, but you still have to advertise, this is to take indication, you still have to advertise this, okay? You'd have to advertise this, um, right here. Um, so to me, to me, it, uh, uh, it, it keeps your promise to replace Roosevelt. Only the two tax increase hearings in a row, avoids election year tax hearing, gets board levy to maximize state aid. We go to bid on Roosevelt in October, promise kept to voters to not raise rate for new construction. So you keep two promises there with this option. Now some of you are saying in your mind, maybe some of you are, um, will that eleven sixty two be sufficient to, to carve a space for the next, uh, bond election? And I think it will because our assessed value went up so high. Um, because that assessed value jumped up so high, this rate right here, that thirteen forty three raises a lot more money. It raises thirty one million dollars, a lot more money than what we were counting on. And, um, uh, and so we can restructure our debt to, um, uh, to accommodate that and still carve out space for the next bond election. Cause we have bond elections here for four or five years in this district, okay? Um, uh, so that's kind of a, that's kind of the thing. And I wanted to show you one more, other thing right here. Here, every year, our rates go down every year. The total rate went down for the prior year four percent. Even with the truth and taxation, total rates tend to go down because it, because the value, if we put that eleven sixty two, that general obligation debt and put these others in there, our rate's gonna go, this is even with the increase, raises six million on that, raises four point two million on that. Our overall tax rate's gonna go down and in prior administrations, super, superintendent Taichuson and superintendent Stevens, always lined up their truth and taxations so that the overall rate was going down. We have to advertise these increases, but we're able to say your rate is still less. And then more importantly, when the taxpayer gets their, their tax announcement, they can see the rates from the prior year, they can see the rates this year and they can see we're going down. I've even had people say to me, why are you?
They look at the rate, they look at the dollars.
They look at the dollar now. Yeah. But it, but we, we can say your value changed. That's why, that's why.
I've got a spreadsheet on my home, a five-year spreadsheet, so mine assessed, assessed value, I'm paying a thousand more a year, more than I was five years ago, so.
But your rate, and one, your rate typically goes down, but it's that value.
It looks at the dollars, dollars up a thousand dollars. And that's what the taxpayers look at. They don't care about the rate, they look at the dollars. Robert, on, uh, cell AJ, you've got the plus six and the plus four. Should there be a negative four million with eleven sixty two?
Yeah, there should. Yeah, that's a good point. I was just imagining.
Cause you're giving that back.
You're giving that back.
Yeah, you're giving that back.
So with the proposed legislation that's happening, which levy would that affect that would possibly go to, to referendum?
These right here, these three.
These three.
Well, actually they're, they're still debating because they said all of them. And then this basic levy, the state requires us to let, every different pastor levy this amount in order to get any vote on the state. And, um, uh, and they go, oh, well, let's pull that one out. The state also requires us to charge a school levy. This, the, the voters have approved this one and the voters have approved that one and they're thinking of taking those two out, you know? And the capital, the capital levy, but all of these levies have to stay eight. Over the years, they've built these big formulas where you get, we get reading money, we get, uh, capital money. We get, um, uh, voted leeway money, board leeway. Every, that, that, that legislation is bad on so many levels.
Can I speak to that, Robert? So we, JLC did a call to action. I copied you, I emailed with the talking points. I heard back from three legislators so far, Katie Hall, Senator Milner and, um, uh, Schultz, Mike Schultz. And they all indicated, at least for right now, it doesn't look like it's gaining any momentum to move forward, but that, we always want to knock on wood.
There was a really thoughtful letter put out by one of the board members in Jordan School District, I'll have to show it to you, that suggested even, he said, I'm not necessarily in, he was speaking as a person, not as a board member, but he said, I'm not necessarily in support or opposition, but the law needs to change. The way that the state says, okay, if we dip below, then we're not gonna match, like, so all of that, so I don't know if that hostage for. Yes, yeah.
Well, they, they, and also their thing too is these levies are all capped, you know, so the state legislature, they, this guy's not a lever on capital. There, there is a cap.
Cap.
And there's a cap on the board, cap on the voting. And so because.
And on capital.
And on cap. And so they, they're safeguards. Now, last thing I want to show you, um, uh, is that how we compare. What would this do to us, okay? So, um, I gave you a comparison chart. Um, we'll just go with option two, where we lower the debt levy. Um, uh, and raise the other two. It raises us the, we're at thirteen on the, um, the Wasatch front. From fourteen to thirteen. So, and this also assumes no other. So, and this also assumes no other districts are going up through the taxation.
Or last year, nine did.
Last year, nine did, okay? And then, and then, uh, we're below on the average on the board and voted, we're below average on the capital, and we're below average on the debt. And our charter, this is separate states, it is too, but.
So why are we so much lower on the state basis without seeing the state?
That's just alphabetical work, it's all the same.
We have a different. Oh, okay, I was like, why does everybody else get that and we don't?
I don't know, it's true. I gotta go. It's, boy, you are a shark.
She's hotter, I mean, we were last, but she's a better number, she's a different pattern, girl.
Okay, all right, so then, but then sometimes on these blasech front comparisons, you're comparing to Ogden and Zalay Murray, they're different, they're urban districts. And so when I, when we compare to the larger suburban districts, Weaver's sixth on the total levy. Davis, look how high Davis is. Weaver's below average on the board voted, Davis is the high. So a lot of times, our teachers and people will say to us, well, Davis, they have a system of principles in their elementary. Well, Davis is this, and Davis is that, you know? The reason, that's why they can't. They've, they've had these levies for a long time, and they've been high. And we just went over a brilliant strategic plan, and 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 a lot of that strategic plan can be enhanced by extra funding, which Weaver has not had. The capital, we do put, we're below average on the capital. With this raise, we'll be, we'll be flipping below average with this, with this suburban districts, you know? Debt, we're below average on the debt here with this. So, 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 and and so this, 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 what I'm, the message here is that our tax rates are not high. Our tax rates are not high. And that's kind of my presentation.
Well done.
Any questions?
Gina?
Heather, did you stay awake during?
I don't quite awake. Yes, John, go ahead.
We're working towards, before Robert knows, and I have to slip off for another state meeting, uh, two thoughts here. Robert, I appreciate everything you've presented on this. And in the twenty-plus years I've been on the board, Weaver School District's always gonna be a bond list. You know what I mean, that's just how the numbers come in all the time, unless you know a husband who's willing to give us money, and we can get out of a hole. Secondary to that, I think those truth in taxation are so much fun, especially the last one, we're through, having one of the highest ones. But realistically speaking, of all the people that I've talked to or that have called me or talked to me about the tax increase on the last one, none of them look at any of this stuff on the, on the rates or whether or whatever's going on, it's simply a truth, it's an increase in my tax.
Yeah.
You know what I mean?
Yeah.
And it was across the board, and there was lots of people that were getting hit, stewards, fire departments, cities, which I live in, so on. So if we're looking at doing what we're supposedly doing, then my vote would be option two, have less impact, and try to make it up because of the economy, and inflation going up so high, all these people that, the newcomers, um, are not gonna be happy again. What we're coming after, end with new schools, with questions such as, why didn't you fill that in when you went for the two, the bigger bond, but you know what I mean, we can work that off, that's why we're over at the board members. But the less impact still give we need to, our common goal gets met. By the time when Weaver School Districts never put four schools around, but a whole high school in one year, would be my, uh, where I would vote if we had a test of either way.
Okay.
Thanks.
Appreciate that, John, thank you. Thanks for tuning in, you two. Jan, anything you wanna add? We're, we're gonna move into one last piece, which is what that, I've asked Larry and elementary leaders to be here just to to give the board an idea of what that bill would look like for the least amount of disruption. We're gonna make a couple of recommendations to the board on that, and then have lunch here in just a bit. But you're welcome to stick around as long as you can, you two, yeah.
Okay, so one other thing, let me chime in with you really quick, Gina, while you have those in your room. I know we are off, we're on school on Friday, but I was seeing phone call last night from Mayor Dan Boyer of City. And on Friday at noonish, you guys may have heard about this, but we probably ought to be on the alert. Friday noonish time, the Air Force is landing a C seventeen at the Ogden Airport at noon. Now, that's a huge airplane, huge airplane. The one thing that we have is we don't have kids in schools, but we still might have people working as historians, patrons that are out there standing there, people that you might see in in meetings, just, we don't, we, we don't have control. The city said they had no control, but as this big airplane comes in and touches the cops, the boy high, his hand reach, the people may ask questions, so just that way.
That's a great heads up.
And my house.
Good thing you're in Hawaii, Jan, you don't need to worry.
They're not even home, they approach over my house.
Thank you for that, appreciate it. Well, I I know you all have a lot to think about, and I want you to just to ruminate a little bit, we don't need to make any.
And the other thing too is the presentation I gave, the the figures will firm up as we get closer. We're working on assumptions, and and the the they really start firming up in June, so that's a wake up.
While I've got Larry and the two great ladies over here, just can I just have them take just about ten minutes? If you're okay with that, feel free to stand if you need to, to stretch your legs while they're they're presenting. But Larry, would you just kind of walk us a quick overview of what what you would recommend happens? And I know we talked about the thirty-month window, we talked a little bit about that. And what I'd like to do is have you two take just a couple of minutes and talk a little bit about your plan to cause the least amount of disruption to kids and to families, okay? So the board can factor that in. We have a plan for this whole process if you, if we, we go ahead to move to build Roosevelt, okay?
I shared that, if you wanted to.
Yes, yeah.
Is that, is that my idea?
Let me, did you email him?
I did, I shared it, it was a Google file, you shared.
Okay, I'll find it here real quick, Larry, go ahead, if you wanna.
Is that okay?
Yep, let me find it.
So what Gina's gonna bring up is is just kind of a a map of Roosevelt. And we just kind of to walk, wanted to walk you through, Robert was in those meetings, so was Dave, we invited elementary, and all of the leaders of Hogan and of MHTN. And to discuss options, and I think that's how we kickstarted this whole financial thing, is looking at these options of how to rebuild Roosevelt.
Is this one right here, Larry? No, let's see, you shared it with me?
I did, it was this morning, it should have been an email.
Oh, let me go to the emails, that'll probably be faster. Right here.
That's it.
Right?
You got it.
Perfect, let me just really quickly.
You're on, yep. At the next page, Gina.
Okay. You're going here.
Do you have the top?
Yeah, where are we looking at?
You can slide up to Gina.
There we go, I don't have to do this right, I'm sorry.
So there's Roosevelt itself. So what we're looking at is, if we even did a phase build, and Robert's timeline's exactly right, January of twenty-four.
Thirty?
Yeah.
I don't wanna, I I've got a lead with this fire marshal, but you know based off capital improvement, what my recommendations were to you as far as dropping down, when it comes time to move forward, does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, y'all did well, take care.
Thanks, John.
John's heard this, just so you know. So you're looking at Roosevelt Elementary right there, and like I said, to do a a phase build, if you'll just keep going up to you, we looked at every possible way, that's a plan of it, we'll come back to that one. This is the building as it faces, if we build it facing south.
The dotted line is where the, the current building is at.
Correct. To the far left is the kindergarten, you can see the kindergarten playground in the back. The the reason I wanna touch on this, and I'm sorry Gina to go to go back.
You're go, good, sorry.
Right there.
Right here.
Can I get it, Gina?
Yes, move around, move around.
Just so you can see it, it's tough to see. If you phase build any building, you have to keep this area going, which is the boiler area. To build a new one, you'd have to start with that area. If we build over here where the ground is, we'd have to flip the school. And that really isn't the layout we'd like, so you'd have to build the boilers and the electrical as you did that first. Then as you tear down, you tear this down last. So that's why the extended thirty month, is that okay, does that make sense? So as she goes through these, this is the plan where we face south. The next option is one where we face north. And you can see now the building is completely flipped.
Right.
Then we thought, well, okay, let's look at one that faces east and west, so we did. So this is kind of an idea of the face build, and how they would each face. So we're kind of looking at the option three final, is, that's the mechanical now, and the kindergarten is flipped. We would prefer it the other way, and a couple of reasons we want it to face south. I built my home when I was twenty-four years old. My dad was one of the smartest men I ever knew, never said a word why I built it. When I got done building it, he said one thing, why'd you put the garage on the north? I was like, you could have told me that why I was building. The ice never melts, the snow never comes off, it's always cooler. If you face it north, you're gonna have the same problem as a school. And that adds cost to what we'd have to do inside the parking lot and the roadways. So we kind of like the idea of still facing south and building it how Dave and I envisioned it. Dave, is that fair?
Yes, in fact, a two-second ad is that it, because it's doable, to actually build it south, kind of position the building and you got everything you wanted, if you could actually build it that way.
That's correct.
True.
That's correct. So, um, sorry Gina, we'll just.
You're going?
Yeah, is that okay?
Yep, yep, so you tell me when.
Okay, so this is.
This is the layout.
Yeah, and this is if we build it in phases, so we really don't want that one, we wanna go back up to the very first one, is that okay? So.
Right here?
Uh, the first plan, right there.
There.
Yeah, perfect. So what we'd like to do is, you can see the black dotted line, I'm sorry, I'll flip it one more time. We would like to build this week in January. But we'd like to take this piece off as we build this way till May, till the kids are out of school. So January of twenty-four to May of twenty-four, we'd be kind of where that dotted line is. So that's where we got in with elementary ads.
And that leaves the rest of the school, the other dotted line, he said, tapped.
Basically.
Yeah.
Yeah, this would have to come out during that January-May phase.
And he said that's kindergarten, right?
Third and fourth.
Well, the new bill's a kindergarten, yeah. Once May and the kids leave for the summer, we would take down the rest of the building, and then rebuild it just like that.
Can we just put kids in portables?
Okay.
The world gets to know.
That's, you're exactly right.
Alex's brain.
Also, that 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 little pre-option there, that first, it's gonna be the January tear down, the January.
Yes.
There's, what grades are there?
Okay.
Third and fourth.
That's what we went into looking, there's like art rooms, library rooms, second grade.
Second grade.
Big. Once we got the build done in this big meeting, we then started thinking the disruption to students. If you do it in phases, your thirty months, you're really disrupting three school years. This way, you have a small disruption for the first couple of months, and then you've got a school year, because you'll reopen of January of August of twenty-five. So then we got thinking, okay, what do we do with the students? We come up with three plans, and then we give the three plans to elementary ads, so if you wanna fire away.
I'm gonna pull up Heather's, Heather and Mary Jo's PowerPoint here, but really quickly, Mary Jo's the resident expert on this, she's done it, she's done it with the Orchard Springs bill, so her expertise is so valuable through this process.
Also, I pull that, from the finance guy's perspective, the the shorter rebuild is good financially.
Yes.
I like it.
Did we tell you D W Anderson's gonna build the new school?
We have the drama.
Mary Jo, one thing I'm learning about Doug is he's the zinger guy, he knows, he's, it's perfect, it's perfectly timed. Okay, so go ahead, I'll, I'll turn the time to you two, okay?
Okay, so some of you are asking who who is going to be, or what is in that one we, that area is talking about. So what we have in there are three second grade classrooms, we have.
So TH Bell's across the street?
Yes.
Okay, I don't know where we're up.
Yeah.
This is Washington Terrace.
That's Washington, yeah.
Yeah, Washington Terrace.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, so, so Roosevelt Elementary, in the one wing that Larry is talking about, would have to be disrupted come January. We have three second grade classrooms, we have an art specialist room, our EL students, there's a large custodial closet there. That's pretty much what is in that area. And so as we talked to and looked at that, there are some things that we could do with those, with those areas and those things, and we can go into more detail if you want to know about that. But so here are our different options. This one is option one, so twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, we displace sixth grade only. And the possibilities we have for that is we find a space for them within the elementary, or we put them across the street in three portables at TH Bell. And I don't know if there would be actual classrooms in TH Bell, I talked to Brock about that, but if not, portables at TH Bell, that only impacts sixth grade. Then the beginning of the next year.
And so those, so those sixth graders then become seventh graders of the twenty-four, twenty-five.
Yeah, so they're not there, so this will be another sixth grade.
Right, but but if they're over by, what I've said is, they're over by TH Bell, that's the very next year, they're in TH Bell.
They are.
Yeah.
So in this option, we leave sixth grade displaced at TH Bell, and we move kindergarten through fifth grade either to Washington Terrace or Birch Creek Elementary. So we take everybody out of the the school, so that's option number one. And this just is some projected enrollments, as far as how many students, and we need a total of four hundred seventy-eight seats, K through six, to be able to place them in other, other areas. So that's what that is. This tells you a little bit about Birch Creek, that their current capacity is at seven hundred, their enrollment as of now is five hundred seventy-three, so that's the number of seats. This is what we'd have available at Washington Terrace, so we'd have a total of four hundred thirty-eight seats available in those two elementars.
Is that current capacity with Washington Terrace include portables? Or are there any portables here at the?
Just within the building.
Just within the building, it's just.
Are there portables here right now at Washington Terrace?
They do have a portable, their fifth grade is in.
Portables.
At Washington Terrace, yeah. And then this would be how we would displace Birch.
Coming where we were putting them at.
So first grade and second grade, they go to Birch Creek, so you can see this, and then we would send kindergarten, third, fourth, and fifth to Washington Terrace. So that's all of option one.
Here's what it'll cost assessed about wise around transportation, you're always gonna have that cost added in.
And and I don't know how that busing, because right now at Roosevelt, we don't have any buses. So if we bust them, it might be some, when we were at Orchard Springs, we just did bust buses in the neighborhood, and the buses picked up and took them to the various schools, I'm assuming it might be something similar to that, okay?
So maybe that community is a bussing concept.
This would be for the entire school year?
Yeah, yeah. So this is option two, once again, we would displace those sixth grade students mid-year, still have those same two options. Now, these two options are a little, are pretty similar, except we leave sixth grade at TH Bell, and we send all of K through five possibly to Valley View Elementary, or we take K through six all to Valley View Elementary. So we don't leave sixth grade there, we take the whole entire school and treat them as a school, and move all of the school to Valley.
Mary Jo, one of the things that we've talked about a little bit, President Lutuson and I and others have talked about is the capital improvement, Larry probably brought it up. As we're going through this boundary study, I'll make this brief, as we're going through the boundary study that we're in right now, one of the questions has actually come up from the Valley Valley community and Valley View community around there is, do we need Valley View? Right now, the current, current enrollment's around.
Three hundred, just three twenty, three twenty-five.
Three twenty, it's an older building, you know, it would show some real good due diligence and part of the board to streamline some things. We've looked at Valley View as a possible school that we have capacity at Midland, and we have capacity at North Park, great capacity that that school could be split and absorbed into those two nearby schools. And we could perhaps, long-term, look at Valley View as either a site for maybe a new Canyon View. We've talked about getting Canyon View out of Ogden City, right? We've talked a lot about that in the past, I know, and you've contemplated that. We have Valley View that's kind of a question mark right now, and because of that, we incorporated it into these options, because could it be used for a period of time for this very purpose, to make sure we get the Roosevelt built then?
Would would we be more solid in the Valley View use by summer? Because you could, because we're having, we have savings there, if you. Because you could, because we're having, we have savings there. If you discontinue a school, as a principal and head secretary, all of that, we could then counter, we could make that, that tax increase a little less.
Very good narrative.
That's a good narrative. When you're a pro of the taxpayers, you can say, we are streamlining, and we're doing our best to, yeah.
What's this, where is Valley View? Okay.
Right out of nineteen hundred, yeah.
So it's a little bit of a.
It would be a little bit for that year, for that year, it would be a little longer bus ride for kids.
There's a site coming.
Well, I, I, I'm just thinking outside the box with it, but it would be less disruptive if we did the, the move to Midland and North Park before we close Valley View and then close Valley View?
It's a good question, Jan. I think the board, really what we better grapple with first is, is that an option? Do you want to look at closing Valley View? You know, that's a discussion we need to look at. And of course, you're gonna, that's a little community, that school's existed there for a long time, and you're gonna have the ripple effect of that. But if we, if our narrative is very well explained and we're able to get ahead of it proactively, I think that most people can see the merit in doing it.
Well, and, and I think they'll be able to see the merit in, in having much better facilities for those kids to attend.
And, and.
Valley View is really.
It's, it'd be, it'd be some capital investment. It does, if we're going to utilize it moving forward.
And I was just gonna say, some of those questions are being asked right now in those boundary discussions by those community members. Jan, when they're looking at the enrollments and the capacities of those schools, especially there in the Roy Cone, they're realizing that those, the, the enrollment is down and does it make sense to keep all these small schools when we have capacity in other schools?
And may I add, board, it's not one of those things where we're trying to tell you we want to close Valley View. This came up in the Valley View community, and so it entered the table that way, right? There was a curiosity. Well, and we need this, we need to talk.
It's incredibly valuable real estate, though.
Yes.
And maybe, uh, it's incredibly valuable to our community, to that community of that area. Um, so even though it may not be an elementary school, it may be a facility.
Absolutely, yeah.
And there may be some options, Larry. I, I can't remember if Valley View, that we could get with Jeff Hales, and maybe even sell off part of that.
Yep, and we talked about, uh, a little bit of capital after. Jeff and I spoke about selling some properties, and we looked at that one as well.
Are we giving you enough to think about today, Board? Janice, you're still upright. We're good, we're good. But there, this is, this is what happens when I talked earlier about growing pains, right? We've got some growing pains that we've gotta look at, and we wanted to make sure you understood that we, we wanted to get your eyes and ears around the Valley View question.
And Superintendent brought up the fact that, that, I don't know if majority is the right word, but a large percentage of, of, large percentage of our special education children come from that area out there more than over.
A lot of Elroy areas.
To, uh, Canyon.
Great point, President. If, if, if we had that placement there where we could get out of Ogden City, one of the things I, I worry about every day is some of those children, Twelfth Street is so close to, to Canyon View, and some of our kids, I'm just gonna be frank, but there, runners, you've heard of that, and we have to, our staff is having to be vigilant. I, I worry about Twelfth Street every day.
Yeah.
And the safety issues for kids there, and it would be nice to be in our own district, have them housed in our own district, and look at the potential of Valley View for Canyon View.
Yeah, Valley View's a quiet neighborhood.
Yeah, the placement of Valley View for runners is perfect.
It is. Yeah, they run in the neighborhood. Yeah, yeah. We can have some help with corralling a little bit more, but, and that doesn't happen on, on a daily basis, but it happens quite frequently. Where we're trying to keep those kids safe. So that's option two. Anything else you wanna say about that?
I think there's one more.
So this shows you some comparisons about why Valley View would be a great fit to utilize if, if needs be.
I'm gonna give one more for your transportation.
Transportation costs would go up without.
Yep, we can get that recouped from the state, because we're traveling more miles.
And in this option, we would take all the Roosevelt.
We would do K six. We would leave those sixth graders.
And then we would take the Valley View kids, and we're gonna say we've already re.
When the boundaries change.
We've already changed your boundary.
Yes, yes.
That happens before.
No, it happened before that. Yes.
Jan, one, one thing with, with the students being at one location is as a parent, I had to go pick up my kid. I'm not going to three or four, two or three different locations.
Or three of them.
I'm gonna go one stop, pick up my kid.
Yes.
Parents with multiple kids at different schools.
But then the downside too, of going to Valley, it's further away, and if you wanna go pick your kid up quick for this, or go to the, or go to the, um, the the musical performance at the school, you're just further away.
Did we see that with, uh, was it Wes Weaver that went to the old Walk List? I mean, I guess it has been done.
Yeah.
For one year, it would be one year.
And one year's not long. Mary Jo would have been there, though. She had kids in four different schools, and so mom would go here and then mom would go there to get the both of them.
Which is worse.
Valley View, they're at the same place.
I think we'd have more time, going back to a committee made earlier about education notification. We'd have a lot more time.
That was really hard. I mean, that's not my kids' role, but we're there. And I know a lot of people weren't happy about that. They got used to it.
Information coming at such a late date.
Yeah.
But I think it's interesting that that grassroots discussion has originated in the Valley View community itself.
That's positive. We didn't come up with it, they didn't.
I also think it's important to talk to your Roosevelt, or, right, Roosevelt's parents first. Not first, but keep them in that conversation.
Well, I think the big selling point is the disruption is just, for most of the students, just for one year. It's not going to extend.
No, but if you say it's one year and these are the two options.
Most parents would choose half, part of Valley View and knowing that they're gonna be adjusting one year.
And this is just a sign their, to, Birch Creek and Washington Terrace are already impacted schools. And if we take another highly impacted school and put that.
So low. Plus you have North Park right down the road, it's a barely red school. So we've got an older school, newer school. I can see the appeal there for a lot of parents.
Say that again about first grade.
So Birch Creek and Washington Terrace, the other two that we were looking at as the option, are already very highly impacted student schools. With students and some behaviors that are taking Roosevelt that in itself is very highly impacted and adding that to those two other schools, we've just maybe created a change.
And you're splitting your, your principal, right, is running two places. Like, this wasn't about the issue over there too.
Yes.
Roosevelt, Washington Terrace, school title one.
Yeah, yes.
Yes.
However, just speaking behalf of the.
I think the other school.
Speaking behalf of the parent, cause that's where our kids went to school Roosevelt. That's where the neighborhood, I think the people in Washington Terrace would like Washington Terrace Elementary or Birch Creek, cause it's closer and have to go clear out the doorway.
Yes, that's the downside.
I'd get a lot of the negative feedback, like that's not the ruling factor.
But I do think when you're splitting families, like if I had a second grader and a fifth grader, now I'm going to two schools instead of one, and you have a principal who's going to two schools instead of one. And if my kids are getting the bus, I don't care. Not that I don't care, but it really does solve a lot of problems. If you know your kid is getting bus from Washington Terrace to Roy, and that's a guaranteed, that solves a lot of.
But the thing I think you can use as a selling point, if you were to go that route, would be that it, it puts our school on, on tag to be built a year, three years.
True.
With only a one-year disruption.
And the Valley View school itself, if you chose that, it's a very functional building. It's, it's not like you would have to restructure the whole thing to be able to do this. It's there and it works. Right.
Some things to think about. And, um, so we wanted to really lay it out to you today.
And what can we do? If we close Valley View and remove Canyon View to Valley View, then are we selling Canyon View, or what's the next step, please?
And that, I think that would be something that would, the board would need to look at. That, I would imagine would be a high, uh, piece, uh, harsh, uh, high sellable land right there, right in the city. I just, I just know how difficult it is. We're busing kids from all over the district to that central side, and this is a little bit, or lucky.
And that's not very central.
It's not. Yeah, it, it's, it's out of our way. The building is, it has its challenges as well. There's just, it would, it would take dividends down the road to get it back in our district, for sure.
What's the possibility of having a north camp like in a south?
Sure, sure. Yep. With some school within a school type thesis maybe added in, for sure.
Lipstick on the painting. That's what it is.
One more thing, sorry, your brains are full. We have Matt Dugdale here, and he was gonna talk about municipal building authority. Um, and he's got a presentation, but I think their brain are full, Matt. But the question I have, the question I have is, uh.
And it all's tied together.
Just give us like a, does it take two or three board meetings to, is it, how, how quick can you make a municipal building authority?
So the process takes two, two board meetings, cause you, uh, create a new corporation, um, and you have to file some things with the state, articles of the corporation, corporate filings, and then in the next board meeting, you then elect your officers of the board, which are the same as, as the school. So you have a president and a, and a board. Um, so that's, that's a series of two meetings.
Matt, is there a downside to starting that, even if we don't pull the trigger on doing it?
You can do it anytime. I would recommend doing it sooner than later, or at least the education component with the public. I think the more that you tell them why you're doing this, um, I, Robert, I think your numbers tell just a very compelling story that's been done elsewhere throughout the state. We did our best to estimate for the election. We want to keep our promise. Um, and so I, I, I would suggest doing that sooner than later so that it's in place. So when you do want to pull the trigger on the bonds, that, um, the building authorities being created.
So if we have a building authority and pull a trigger on a revenue bond a year or more later, that doesn't matter.
Doesn't matter.
The structure's in place.
The structure's in place, and anytime you can.
And we don't even have to use it.
But there's no disadvantage to having the structure in place right away, as soon as we can.
I, um, I, I feel that as you get closer to the kind of political environment of the fall, there's, I, I, it's nice to get it done before then.
Yeah.
Do it, you know, late spring, early summer, that's, that's all the wealth for other districts.
It's like an April-May board meeting combination?
Yes, I think that would be great, great timing, unless there's a compelling reason to not do it in a way.
Well, I've made, I've made you.
Made you?
It is, Matt, is the initial, uh, board meeting where, where we would vote to do it.
Yes.
That, that's just a matter of three or four minutes.
Correct.
I mean, we could almost do that in a, in a March and then a May. Just, just to get it on the books, and then, because April's a busy month for us, but then, then talk more about it in May, just, just to get it going.
Absolutely. You, you could address it in your next board meeting and just mention, you know, it's, it's, we'll be ready for discussion, or however you'd like to handle it.
Yeah, I mean, we have to have a naming committee. The name is corporation.
The name is, uh, yeah.
Have an extra mental health specialist.
You'll have mascots, it'll be great.
You're gonna be the principal.
So that means you're gonna choose the colors. We said none on that one.
We need, we need your, your, you were back. Thank you. Thanks for everybody for coming. I know we've got a lot to think about, and just to point out, Matt put this together, and it's probably stocked full of, and answered a lot of questions.
Great stuff to put you to sleep on. Uh, so I brought hard copies and I emailed it.
And they did a great, they did a great.
We appreciate it. Well, we do have, President, you wanna kind of, if you wanna get us moving, you have good lunch for everybody. Anybody who has time to stay, would love you to stick around and eat a bite of lunch with us, so.
No more business after this one.
Nope, nope, Dan, you can go and. Let the dog.
Okay.
Well, Robert says we don't have to have a vote to pull this, so, uh, that's good. Anything else, Janice?
I grabbed one of Matt's copies of that.
Doug, anything?
Can you hold on for me?
Sleep inducing.
Yes, Jan, we've got a folder for you. We'll make sure you've got one in there.
Thank you.
Clyde, Dave, anything? Kelly? Larry?
Yes, sir.
Let's do it. We're adjourned.
Let's eat, let's eat. Okay, Pam's, uh, got a great lunch house just right outside the door. Feel free to come back in and eat it in here, in the lunch office. And all are invited, yes. We kept you along with the timer. Thank you. Thanks for your guidance. Yeah, thank you, thank you.
Clyde, we're on time. Uh, as always, it's a busy time, isn't it? There's a lot of good things happening in the district, uh, regardless of what sometimes gets publicized, huh? Appreciate everyone's hard work and, and everything they can do for the district. Uh, we excused board member Bruce Jardine tonight. He was going to try and tie in remotely, but I think that's not going to work out, so uh, we'll just go ahead and proceed, uh, without him. Superintendent, do you wanna, uh, follow through with some updates from our departments, please?
Yes, so tonight, very bored. We, we're anxious and excited to hear from Mary Jo Williams and Brock Vichell, elementary and secondary ed directors. And they're going to take us through an update on where the boundary study process is in terms of our new Westfield Cone. So, um, we're moving quite right along with that process, so we wanna welcome them. Thank you.
So Superintendent. Superintendent, for President and Board, we're excited to, to share with you what this process is and how, how it is progressing. Um, we feel like we're gonna be able to accomplish our objective and, um, be ready come September to have some options for you to look at as far as some different proposals. So if you can look up at one of the boards here, uh, the purpose that we were given was to create recommendations for the board for attendance boundaries that will adequately populate the new Westfield Cone, which would be Westfield High School, Mountain Year Junior High, and of course, the new elementary school. What this is going to do is result in the shifting of our current boundaries across the district so that we make sure we balance that student enrollment and the, the needs that are at very different schools. What we're asking some of those, um, teams to look at is that the growth that we're going to have in the future, staffing, student safety, and some of the different programs that are available in our schools. We do know that there is a potential for split schools, and our goal is to minimize the number of those schools that will be impacted with a split. But knowing that we can avoid it in all situations. I'm just gonna let you look through, this is our process timeline up to this point. It starts with asking permission from the board to actually begin this whole process. We, uh, created what is called a district boundary team and a school boundary team. We started off by having the district boundary team come for a training, and that is composed of the principal, one employee at the school, and one community members. So there are three people that are part of that district boundary team. Those three are also part of the school boundary team, but they could add an additional seven members of community representation. We asked them to look very carefully at the study areas in their, their boundaries and make sure that we have representation, especially in those areas that were going to be impacted possibly by the boundary changes. So, um, some of them have the full ten members, some might have, um, one or two members more, and some a few less, but that composed the school boundary teams. What happens is, we meet as a district boundary team about once a month with those three people. They're bringing back any concerns from the school boundary team, or sharing information to the school boundary team that was discussed. So they'll take it back, meet with the school boundary team, that's just kind of a back and forth. We have a district meeting, we have a school meeting, and that communication goes back and forth. So that's pretty much what we've been doing up to this point. They've been having discussions. We feel like there's a lot of progress being made, especially with our high schools and with our junior highs, which then will allow us to kind of funnel down to the elementary level.
All right. Uh, just one thing to emphasize there is, is with our district team, we, we've broken our cones up into three separate cone teams. So we have a Weber boundary team, um, that comprised of Weber High, Orion Junior High, and the elementaries within that area. We've got the Fremont, uh, team, which has Rocky and Walk List, um, as the junior highs, and then the elementaries that are gonna be impacted, and then we have a Roy team. So where we have that district team, there's realistically three district teams, um, and then each school has its own school team. So it's, it's a huge number of individual teams that are coming together for the whole of the project. Uh, we wanted to talk a little bit about where we're, where we're going before we show some of the work that's been done. Um, so as of right now, we're in between those two district.
So as of right now, we're in between those two district team meetings. And our, our school teams have been asked to get together and continue to work on identifying the needs of the Westfield cone. Our high schools, as you'll see in a few minutes, are a little further ahead. Uh, junior highs are, are close behind. And for the reasons we'll explain, the elementaries are, are behind because of the fact that we don't want to split those schools. Mary Jo did emphasize that. One thing I think that's important to remember, and for the sake of, of this point, we're gonna kind of set Snowcrest aside, because we know that they're going to be going to Weber High. Uh, but in the past, we've had four high schools and eight junior highs, and so it's been a pretty clean two to one junior high to high school ratio, where we've got this new high school coming in and one junior high. We now have a five high school to nine junior high school split, which is gonna show that we're gonna have to have some of those splits. It's not gonna be an even, um, even distribution. So that's just something that we, we emphasize within our teams, is it's not gonna be perfect, but we wanna do the best we can to not send small groups of students, um, you know, like a five percent of one school to another school. If we were gonna have any kind of split, we wanna have a pretty hefty split, so that they're still can, being able to continue with their classmates, classmates that's gone through the schools with up to that point. So as we come back in March, we have one more district team meeting. The idea there is to take a lot of this feedback that we're hearing and prepare ourselves for the open houses. The open houses, the way we've set those up is they're gonna be, um, held at a couple of the junior highs in the cones. We're going to present some of the, um, ideas up to that point around their gym. We expect a pretty good turnout. Uh, I think the community's gonna be interested in seeing what, what things look like. Uh, we're gonna have a QR code where they can come in, scan that QR code, and give us that feedback. We wanna know the study areas that they're living in, uh, what concerns they have, what ideas they have. And then that's gonna allow us to take that back to our teams and, um, based on the school teams that would be impacted, get those to, to the school level teams, and then they can start having a discussion of whether they've already, uh, considered some of those concerns and recommendations, and they feel comfortable where they're at, or if it's a new one that they wanna revisit and see if there's any changes to, uh, the ideas that they've put together. So that, that's what we're looking at with regards to the, the open houses. After the open houses, we get together again as a district team, try and put all of that together as our school year wraps up, to prepare for the fall board meeting where we present the recommendations. And we know that that's a pretty hefty break, right? So we wanna make sure that we're looking at everything. In the long run, we wanna do what's best for the families of our district, the, the schools of our district, and the district overall. That's a really important part of what we're, we're looking for here. So we're not trying to rush this, but we wanna make sure we get things right, uh, because this is a very, very big change. And then the plan is, at the September board meeting, bring this to you on some recommendations that the teams put together on that first reading, gather that input, um, from the community in between, and then on the October meeting, bring it to you again for a second reading. That, that's what we're looking at going forward.
Do you have a timeframe on those community meetings? Do you have a, a time?
Uh, yes, they are all starting at, uh, four thirty, if I remember correctly.
Are you talking about the district or the school?
The open house meetings.
Yeah, I believe they're, they're four thirty at each of those.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, and, and our plan is to, uh, message those out as clearly as we can through social media, through the, the different schools' websites. Uh, we're gonna ask the principals to make sure they send out the information via A C Miller. It's something we wanna be very transparent and open with, because that community puts, uh, critical to this process.
No, I was just gonna say, I, like, I appreciate, I've talked to many parents who are serving on several, at least in my area, serving on their different boundary committee, um, committees. And I know that, like, they're happy with the process. And I think the biggest concern with some of the families, especially in like the Majestic area, was that several years ago when we redid boundaries there, they felt like they had come up with all these plans, and then when it came back to them, it was completely, looked nothing like how they had studied it. And so I appreciate that we're working with transparency, and I'm just hoping, and I'm assuming we've learned from that, and we're gonna move forward, and at least be transparent with the parents too, and say, hey, this isn't working, we need to redo this. Um, because I know there were a, a lot of people down there that, um, are a little bit jaded, I guess, you said?
Yeah, no, Trent, uh, Bill's has been fantastic. Everything that he's done with the schools, he's made available back to the schools, so that if there's any questions, the principal can sit down with those concerned community members and show, uh, what they're looking at. In our district meetings, we go through each individual school, and some of the thought process that they've talked about, the schools have been able to, to talk to their reasoning and their thinking behind some of the, the changes they've made. So it's been really, really good for us to see. Um, I do think we've learned from that. There are still some concerns in certain areas around the district, which is understandable. I mean, this is, this is a big change. Uh, but we wanna make sure that we, we give them an opportunity to voice those concerns and, um, and take all of that into account.
Rob?
Yes?
Mary Jo, and maybe this is probably the superintendent, just a thought, as I start always at the end and work back, as you go through this process, and if we're gonna be transparent, are we gonna open the schools with a gap, be able to grow, so that we at least know numbers when it comes time to talking to, to those people versus
Absolutely.
the explanation at the end, when we get, they're gonna say, oh, we didn't fill the school. No, there's a reason, if you remember, when we went back to the February meeting or the March meeting. So if that's included as part of that transparency discussion.
Absolutely.
Of where we're gonna hit a bench before we allow them more.
That's also my question. What's our enrollment for the twenty-four school year? What's our goal for those three schools?
I've, I've got that coming up here. Oh, but that's been a point of emphasis for us all along.
Perfect.
Is we know that growth is inevitable in certain areas of our district, and so we wanna, we wanna start to where we can, uh, absorb that growth, right? And not be right back over a hundred percent capacity within a couple of years. So that, that's the idea, and that will show that.
And I think too, that one of the things that's been talked about is as we try to do this, and, and we don't want to start, obviously, a school at capacity after we've just gone through this whole process. And I think that's been part of the conversation with those communities too, is that if we make sure that that enrollment is low enough, some of those people who wanted to apply for a boundary exception to return or stay at that school, there's that possibility for them to do that also.
I just wanna say how much I appreciate your thoroughness and your commitment to doing this the right way. It just makes such a difference for our district, and thank you for your hard work. Appreciate it.
Thank you. It's, it's been a team effort, I bet, all the way through every member of our, our community. So it's been, it's been pretty special to watch. Uh, so we wanted to show just a couple of, of the reasons and where we're at with some things, and hopefully this will answer a couple of those questions you guys had. So currently Fremont is at a hundred nine percent of their capacity, Weber's at a hundred eight percent, and Roy's at a hundred two percent. We know those will be the three most impacted schools. What the schools have started to look at, and I'll leave this for, we got a brand new tool, tool. Weber and Fremont sat down and started having a discussion around that area up there. And right now, the orange is the current Weber boundary. Uh, the green is the current Fremont boundary, the pink is the current Roy boundary. And knowing that there's going to be a split in the Fremont boundary to create Westfield, and the fact that Weber is already at a hundred and eight percent capacity, Weber felt like they needed to have some students shift towards Fremont. And so each of those school teams came up with some ideas, um, and they were off by literally one study area. It was pretty interesting, they both were almost right on. Um, and so they then sat down and came up with this as, as an idea that would fulfill, uh, that, that split. The line along right here, this runs the tracks that follows Twelfth Street. Uh, we didn't use Twelfth Street directly, because there are some houses, as you go out one direction or other, that are between the tracks and Twelfth Street, that we wanted to make sure we include. Um, that would be the southern boundary for Fremont-Westfield. This little area right here is unique. It had to cut down like that, because the entry to that is up from the north. There is no entry from the south, and so it didn't make sense for Westfield to come up in the Fremont boundary, go down into that, and then come back around. So the team developed that, uh, as their boundary, and then Roy, you can see down on the, the lower part as well. Um, the interesting.
Yes, can you, with your pointer, uh, can you point where forty-seven hundred is on there?
I believe that's it right there.
Okay, so, so that little jog is way out west then, isn't it?
Correct. Yeah, and there's Trent.
Okay, I know exactly where.
And that's a very, I think, five houses?
Yeah, there's only.
Five to eight houses?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, so looking at this, the projected first year, so that, this is a little tricky, because you've got the fact that our, our current tenth graders, when they become seniors, when this opens, they get to choose to either stay at their current school or move. So it's hard to project exactly where this is gonna fall, but you can see that Fremont projects at about seventy-three percent. Uh, Weber's ninety-four, Roy's ninety-seven, and Westfield would open at sixty-two. So that, right there, addresses some, uh, ability for Fremont and Westfield to continue to grow. And what we've noticed is we've moved down a couple of years in grades, is if you look down to the third year projection, all of those numbers drop a little bit more. So where Weber is at a hundred eight, they open at ninety-four, that first year after the shifts, but two years later, they're down to eighty-seven. It really makes for a comfortable school environment, uh, at our high school level. Uh, for the junior highs, similar ideas with this. Um, this one is a little more unique because of the fact that we will likely have some split junior highs. As Walkquist and Orion were having a conversation, they originally each split Orion's boundaries a little bit. And then as they started looking again at what happens in the projections, that first year, and then Orion again for that second year, when they choose not to split Orion, the numbers actually dropped down towards ninety percent, which is a pretty comfortable position for them to be. So both communities actually felt like there was no need to split that Orion school boundaries from where they are currently. Walkquist has a hard time taking anybody in, because about eighty-five to ninety percent of their enrollment right now is within their walk zone. Um, so it's really hard to have any students who's in Walkquist's current boundaries go to another school. So it made sense, uh, to not take any from the east and, uh, just work to create mountain views on the, the other end of the Walkquist boundaries. Um, but again, you can see, as they go through those projections, all of these are in a pretty healthy place to continue to grow going forward. And there's some fine tuning that will need to be done, uh, with the junior highs, high schools, and then I'll show you elementaries here in a second, just because of, of the, uh, un-wanting to split elementaries if possible, right? We know there's a, a potential, but we really wanna try and do our best there.
So is the goal with Walkquist then to mainly move the bus, the kids that aren't in the walk zone would end up shifting?
So it's, uh, this is Pioneer Road. Um, and so it takes any of those students who are, uh, pretty close to outside that walk zone, start shifting them towards Mountain View.
And where's Mountain View on the map?
Mountain View is right here.
Oh, yeah, it's labeled.
That's okay. The labels kind of just end up in odd spots. So you can see, I've, I've asterisked a couple over here. Those are the ones that we anticipate possibly being split junior highs. So it looks like we're gonna most likely have four of our junior highs that will have to split between the high schools. Any, any questions on that?
No, I was just gonna say, I was just, I met with them, with the community council at Orion, and the parents at least that were involved there are receptive to this idea of split schools. I know it's not ideal, but I know a lot of them realize, especially where, like, when you, I think if you educate the community on, have an odd number of junior highs, cause really Snowcrest, I don't wanna say doesn't count, but like, there's nothing to be done with Snowcrest, that it makes a lot of sense, and other districts do this, and it's just kind of the way it has to be. But there was, seems to be some buy-in there, and I think as we work towards having those parents speak with other parents, um, I don't think it will, I think it will work well, at least.
And one thing that was brought up to us by, um, Chris Ernest, the principal at Weber, was the number of teachers that are on a buyout. Um, they have roughly fifty of their teachers on a, a prep period buyout. So they're giving up their prep period on one day, which, which overworks them. Um, they don't have that opportunity to have that period off. And so there's, there's a lot of, um, emphasis on trying to relieve that pressure on the number of students in that school, so that those teachers aren't put in a position where they need to take those. Um, and this will definitely help out. And then lastly, for the elementaries, um, as Mary Jo and I were looking at this, the hard thing is, as you move further towards Roy City, the elementary, uh, boundaries are tougher to independently just start creating. So knowing that our mission is to create the boundary for the three new schools, we felt like it was best to give the suggestion of, let's start back with our goal in mind of the boundary for our new elementary. So we've asked, uh, Canesville, West Haven, Country Goo, and Hooper to get together and start looking at what their boundary, oops, I apologize for that. Uh, what the boundaries might look like in each of their areas around this part. And then it would be easier to build out from there, uh, to finish out the elementaries. So it's, it's just repeating that process little by little, working with their neighboring schools and their, their teams to identify where the changes may need to make place, keeping in mind, obviously, um, what is gonna happen with regards to the junior highs, now that we're getting closer to the high school and the junior high boundaries. It should be something where we can, we can try and fit those together. And you can see, that right there is our elementary walk zone in comparison to the rest of the elementaries on that side of the district. And so we wanna make sure that everybody in those, those areas have input. But if Lakeview starts making recommendations and moving towards the new elementary, they're gonna run into some situations where the puzzle pieces don't quite match. So we wanna make sure we're moving strategically, um, from our new elementary, which is the goal of the boundary study, back towards, uh, the, the zones on the, the Roy end of the district. Mary Jo, anything to add, or?
I don't think so. Uh, if you have any questions, we'd be happy to try and answer those.
Take, take back to the groups how much we appreciate all their hard work. I know this is an emotionally charged thing in the communities, and I get that out our way quite a bit, where we're a little closer than that community, and we appreciate everybody doing that. I think you, you know, there's as many variables here as are all students, and you've done very well, as I know.
We appreciate that.
I did hear one comment numerous times, and I'll throw out to you, and let you guys deal with it. It doesn't matter what we do, the board's gonna do their own thing anyway. And I've tried to tell people, we don't have the resources to do this. We will listen to your proposals and do what you feel is best. It's just a whole on our part. We're not, we're not doing any, uh, digging here. So please let them know that we're not going to do what we wanna do anyway.
Absolutely, and I think that's the, the point of the transparency, is that they can see all along the way that this is community-led. We're here to guide the process, but it's community-led. It's their feedback that they're giving us, that we're helping to facilitate. And in the end, it's their voices that we're gonna present to you.
Very well done. Thank you. Anything else?
Well, I'd just say thank you for, as well, for all your hard work, and appreciate that. I jokingly talked to some retired administrators and asked them, how would you like to be on the boundary committee? And they, ooh, no, thank you. So thank you so much, and just speaking behalf of Bonneville, South, and Bell, they're fine with these boundaries.
We tried to make it easy on them, that's for sure. Mr. Hirsch, but Hirsch said that. You guys are doing great. It's, it's tough, there's a lot of stress out there because of the unknown. But with the transparency, you'll see that come down, I believe, as we've got other people being informed. So just the process starting helps that whole emotional-driven thing. So thanks a bunch to you and your teammates. Very well done.
Thank you.
Janice, would you like to take just a second?
I will.
Robert, did you have something first?
Well, I can go ahead, Jess. I just have the information I would.
Okay. Janice has just a couple of legislative updates she wanted to.
Okay, um, from our board, well, first of all, I'll go to J L C, which is the Joint Legislative Committee. And it includes, uh, superintendents and representatives from every school district in the state. And the big discussion, the heated discussion, the complex discussion there has been the removal of the earmark. And, uh, the resulting position of the J L C is to oppose the removal, the joint resolution of removal as it is written now. They, as a group, we are opposing it. If new language develops, then it will probably require another together meeting and an analysis of, of the new language. And if it balances off, if it has constitutional commitment, uh, to the removal, to replace the earmark. So that's in the works, that'll be in the future. Then from our Board of Directors, there were just a couple takeaways. A reminder, each one of you have received about the, uh, regional meeting, which will be at six P M on March ninth at the Timber Mine. If you can't attend that. If you can't attend that meeting, you can opt for any of the other, uh, listed regional meetings. The information will be the same. Um, April second, we're supposed to be aware that in Orlando, uh, the district, the, the state will be putting on a Sunday, Sundays, um, event, and that families are welcome. We, as a body, are encouraged to attend our caucus meetings and to continue our conversation with legislators. Let them know about the master work, um, certification, and give them feedback, ongoing feedback, uh, regarding education bills between now and the next session. Uh, last but not least, uh, the U S B A Delegate Assembly has a change of date that involves all of us who, um, are alternates for that. It will be October, or, excuse me, August twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth. Anything else, superintendent, that you wanted to add?
You get every point I slipped, thank you. Janice?
Yes.
I, an alternate, or I'm part of that?
You, you and I are the delegates.
Okay, from all states?
Uh, yes, well, whatever you can. The first one's the pre, the second is all day for the delegates, so, yep. Thank you.
Thanks, Janice. Doctor Peterson?
Oh, I just wanted to give you an update. We, uh, went for, on a bond sale, or bid on the twenty-third. We had eight, it was, Matt Diggel was very excited. We had eight, uh, bidders. Um, Citigroup won the bid at three point six nine percent. So that's a good injury. And I was pretty, I was glad it was below four. And, um, and we'll close on those bonds over a hundred million on, um, on March the fifth or... That'll be, that, that money will be in our coffins.
Wonderful. Thank you. Uh, Mr. Stuart Campbell?
Yeah, just give him just what he needs, I appreciate it. For President and Vice President and Superintendent, uh, board members, thank you so much for giving me this opportunity. Um, many of you know me, my name is Stuart Campbell. I'm the father of four children here in Weber School District in Pleasantview. I am part of a group called Utah Parents United, maybe you've heard of us. It's a nonprofit, uh, parent volunteer organization. I don't officially represent them, I oversee, I'm the chapter head for Weber School District. So we have, um, a chapter for each district in the state of Utah. And, um, we help gather other parents who are concerned about their children and education. Um, we're a group of parents committed to protecting the parent-child relationship in law and in education. We believe that children are more successful when their parents are involved, um, and engaged in their lives and in their education. We monitor state legislation and LEA policies and promote legislation, legislation and policies that support parental rights and speak out against legislation or district policies that might undermine parental rights. We teach parents about their rights that are protected under Utah state law. Uh, we teach them the Utah Code. So you'll see the handout that I gave you there, it's just a few of the codes that we're referencing, um, how it's codified into law, um, that, and I'll, I'll point to a couple here. Um, parents have the right to raise and manage the education of their children as they see fit. It, it, uh, in Utah state law, parents are in charge of the children's education, not this, the districts. So that's, that's a little bit there, I won't, I won't belabor that much, since you have the, the worksheet there. Um, we do conduct, um, a lot of in-person and virtual trainings with, uh, parents across the state. Um, uh, some of the courses that we've taught within last year, um, how to have uncomfortable conversations with your teacher or principal, and to do it respectfully, and, and come at it so it's an effective meeting. Um, how to get an I E P for your child, how to understand the public, uh, school system, and how to start with the teacher, and no, don't go over everyone's head, kinda thing. Um, we teach parents about their education options that are available in Utah, um, you know, public school, homeschool, hybrid, charter, private school. Um, we teach parents what is in the, what's in the hidden agenda behind social-emotional learning curriculum, what is okay and what is not, and how to protect your children from harmful content. We teach parents how to preview curriculum and how to give feedback in the district. We teach parents how to navigate the trans, transgender landscape and how to make sure everyone's rights and interests are respected and everyone is safe at school. Uh, we teach parents about health education that sounds and looks more like the hypersexualization of our children, and how to push back on the curriculum that's used there. We also teach about, um, uh, we teach parents, um, what's missing in our history classes and how we want history curriculum to teach about the importance of preserving and protecting American freedoms. We teach parents about what is critical race theory and how LEAs might hide the curriculum or call it by another name. And we know other districts, like Jordan School District, you probably saw on the news, they've had teachers and administrators who have admitted, um, under hidden camera, to, um, to teaching that. And so that's, that's things that, uh, you know, parents are worried about. Um, we teach them how to, uh, locate the inappropriate books in the school libraries, which are still in Weber libraries. We teach parents how to engage in, with the Utah State Board of Education. And lastly, um, the last one we did recently was, uh, how parents can opt their children out of all surveys in the school, namely Sharp, Canaroma, and even some of the state assessments. U P U wants to partner with Weber School District. We want to engage with you. Um, we share many common goals, um, and it was so good to hear how the Boundary Study Committee is involving the community and parents, and that's the exact right thing to do. Um, one last personal note before I open up to any questions, 'cause the point of this is to create a better relationship and understanding about who our organization is. Um, a personal note, education is not my field. Um, many of the educators, and there are some in this room, um, I didn't study education. I studied, my bachelor's is in finance, and I just got my M D A last December. Um, so this isn't my field. Um, but in my experience in the last three years, um, I can tell you as an outsider looking into this system, um, parents don't know and feel like they can control their children's education. Parents feel like they are the last ones consulted in a lot of, in a lot of times. It feels like educators' interests are put that above parents, and that's why our group exists. Um, we're, um, the most important stakeholder, I would argue. Um, they are our children. And we educate parents on how to advocate and obtain the best resources for their children. And lastly, I'll just say, thank you to each one of you for running and for serving our community in this way. Um, I have such great, high respect and admiration for you all and for leading the district the way that you are. And, um, I, again, I don't, I know in your last special board study session, um, someone made the comment that, well, this, education is the cultural battleground. Um, for whatever reason, I think communities are, are responsible for that. I don't think it's just the education community, I don't think it's just parents, or, there, there's lots of reasons for it. Um, but I'm, I'm just one person in Weber County, um, trying to make a difference, so. Anyways, with that, I would love to answer any questions you have for me or our organization.
Stuart, if I could, sorry, Mr. President, I know time is short, we wanted to give you that. You mentioned that you have trainees that go on. Where are those held and when are they held?
There are a lot of them, and they, their main office is in North Salt Lake, uh, but they do a lot of them virtually. And sometimes they'll go on a, a road show, um, around the state to different districts when they know that there's, um, more involvement or there's a particular issue. Um, but a lot of them are virtual, you can go to U P U's website.
So they have, they, they post notices?
Yeah.
So you know where the time and date and where to be?
Exactly. Yeah, so people can opt into them if they're interested in that.
Stuart, I gotta tell you, thanks for at least doing what you're doing.
Yeah.
The biggest thing as a board member that I can say when people call is, have you talked to your teacher? No. Have you talked to your principal? No. You can't go from here to here. So when you mentioned that part, work it.
Yeah.
And let us be a part of a resource to help you. But, but I like that part. So thanks for what you're doing to make sure kids are protected. We're here to work together.
Yes.
As a vice president, I think I'm here to work with you.
Absolutely, thank you. Yeah.
Um, I, it was informative to me to have you list the, as you say, the trainings, the whatever you're trying to, uh, familiarize parents. Is that on your website?
It's on the website as well.
Because it was, it was a wonderful enumeration of your involvement.
Yeah, I took them all from the website last night, as I was preparing my talking points today, so they're all there. And, and I've, I've done most of them live, if not on a delayed basis, and so, really good content. And again, we're a nonprofit organization, we're just parents, we're all just straight in the state, so, is it professional? No, in a lot of cases, but, um, they're willing parents that are really trying to do the best.
Well, and I really need to congratulate you on your approach and your appreciation of educators, of, of the education system, of working together and to having a nice congenial attitude about it. Thank you so much.
You're welcome. I don't wanna give up on public education yet. I don't wanna give up on it yet, and I, it's not gonna go without a fight from Stuart Campbell, so. Anything else that I can answer?
Anything else, anyone? Thank you, sir, appreciate you, Mary Jo.
Thank you so much.
Thanks. S C Board, is there anything else that we need to, if anyone has? Okay, why don't we adjourn and, uh, we've got just a couple minutes, we'll get started, yeah, thanks.